Oh, let's see, yeah. Andy J is probably Mr. Drew's Wiki. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Did you? And Ms. Boner, did you see any? I mean, I just happened to see his name. Mr. Drew's Wiki?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
He is present and accounted for.
I can't get my photo up, though.
Okay. Next up, pavement of voucher planning board secretary for this evening, March 8, 2021. I need a motion for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'm sorry, could I just have who motioned that? Okay.
Second hearing.
Thank you. I just couldn't hear Dr. Campbell without the microphone.
And, okay.
Mr. Chairman, that allows me to make a second reminder to the board, which is we, I've been told we need to be more disciplined as a group and announce, and Sean Gertner, I just failed myself, to be honest with you. Um, when we start to speak, to tell the record and folks on Zoom in the virtual world who we are, who's speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Gertner. Engineering planning matters. Do we have anything for this evening? Thank you. Legal matters. Mr. Gertner.
Mr. Chairman, just, just one matter for this evening. It's really a reminder to the board for the March 22, 2021 meeting. For those new members, please read the transcripts on the Cedar Swamp Plaza application. For those members who sat through the meeting, we would ask, although you don't need to, since the matter was heard in 2019 and has gone through some legal machinations, you'd probably benefit from reading the transcript, but certification is not required. We'd ask, they have been sent. If you could read them, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to just mention, I'd like to thank all of the members of the board. You guys have been devoting an awful lot of time. We've had a meeting almost every week. I, I really appreciate the effort that you guys have been putting forth. We've been staying here late at night almost weekly, and it's really appreciated. Um, I, I can assure you that this is going to come to, and then soon, we're going to get caught up and we're going to move on. But thank you for your participation. It's much appreciated. There's no football. Right. Okay, jumping right into applications this evening, we have block 3001 lots 5, 6, 19, and 20, Adventure Crossing Phase 2. Mr. Klee, you want to bring us up to speed on that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. The Klee Planning Board Engineer, we heard initial testimony on this application, I believe on January 25. The long and the short of it is they are seeking to amend a prior site plan application that approved two warehouse building. They want to consolidate that into a single warehouse building, 745,100 square feet, and also amend the prior approval to eliminate a 450,000 square foot recreation building and substitute that with a new 384,000 square foot warehouse building. We had some initial testimony, I believe, from the applicant, the applicant's engineer and planner, and I believe we're just continuing tonight, I think, with planning, traffic test.
Thank you, Mr. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ernie Peters, board planner. The application is still located in the HCMU Highway Commercial Mixed Use Zone. The application is proposing a permitted use still. It appears the application is still without variances. And as Mr. Klee had indicated, I believe, we're going to get traffic testimony this evening. I would note for the record that revised plans were submitted 10 days before the hearing. I would ask if somewhere during the testimony this evening, a brief overview of the revisions was put on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. Prior to tonight's hearing, Mr. Borden's office submitted exhibits to the board secretary, and we handed out hard copies to the board members. But as we call them up, they'll obviously be on the screen. In addition, as Mr. Peters indicated, we did make a submission to the board at least 10 days prior to this evening. Mr. Borden, although he finished his testimony at the last meeting, we're bringing him back up so that he can summarize for the board what has been submitted since the last meeting and just give you a refresher on, on the nature of this application and a overview, broad picture of it. And Mr. Borden, Sean, do we, you reswear him or no?
I usually do.
Okay.
Mr. Borden, you raised your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You've been previously sworn and your credentials accepted in this application, so through the chairman, Mr. Alfieri is your witness.
Thank you. Mr. Borden, before you summarize what was submitted since last hearing, would you, in a broad sense, summarize for the board the improvements from, of this plan over what was previously approved by the board last year? Do you want to introduce each exhibit now, or you want to wait till we call them up?
You can wait till we call them up.
Okay, go ahead, Ian.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to just give a brief, in case there's new members of anybody who's listening, a brief overview of the project, and very brief, and then I'll review the revisions that were made. But just as a reminder, this is Phase 2 of Adventure Crossing. Phase 2 had received, two years ago, a general development plan approval, which included mixed uses on this portion of the property, that portion being lots 5, 6, 19, and 20. Those uses were a convention center, a golf facility, like a Topgolf, 100,000 square foot retail, and indoor recreation, again, approximately 100,000 square feet, and apartments, about 250 apartments. That approval was granted by the zoning board for GDP general development plan. That approval was appealed as a result of a settlement. The zoning board subsequently adopted an amendment rescinding the GDP approval for these Phase 2 properties. And we have developed this proposed project of warehouse use as an alternate to that, to that project. The Phase 2 warehouses, this planning board did approve a preliminary final major site plan in July of 2020 for three buildings. We are now consolidating two of the buildings into a single building, so we have two proposed buildings. And as a result of those changes, that we're seeking an amended approval for, we have a 16% decrease in building size, 28% decrease in parking. We're increasing the buffer, specifically the Hollitree Court, from the required 50 feet to up to three times the required buffer. We continue to have no access to Anderson Road with the exception of emergency vehicle ingress. We have ensured, and Mr. Ray will get into this in his testimony, that all truck access to Phase 2 will be through a dedicated access to Monmouth Road. There is no warehouse truck traffic through the Phase 1. And just to briefly finish on this aspect, summarize the remainder of Adventure Crossing. We have Phase 1, which is adjacent to the site to the west, which has a large mix of uses, including hotel, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation with four ballfields, convenience store, fast food restaurants, sit-down restaurants, retail, office. In addition, there has been a GDP, the amended GDP the zoning board granted wherein the GDP was rescinded for Phase 2, includes Phase 3, which is west of Phase 1, between Phase 1 and Six Flags Theme Park. And that includes a large indoor 450,000 square foot indoor recreation building, as well as apartments and retail and restaurants, as well as a medical office. And of course, we have the center point of the development, which is the medical research facility, which was approved by the GDP in Phase 3, but we, we are seeking through an application at the zoning board to move that use into Phase 1, to move it up earlier into the project timeline. So, so that is just a brief summary of the overall project. Once again, as far as the changes that were made, I guess, if you don't mind, we is jumping down the list, but we, we have six exhibits that we had provided by email dated February 26. And A5 is the amended site plan.
See that far, Ian?
Barely.
Is that it?
That's, that's A1. Three, four. And that's it.
That's six.
That was it. That's it, fine. Thank you. A5, yes.
Can you identify A5 for the records?
Yes, sir. A5 is the amended site plan that was submitted to the board on February 26. It is the overall site plan sheet number two. And primarily what we did here, again, I, or not again, but I would note that none of the buildings, building sizes, building locations, parking, loading, none of that changed in this revision. This, this change was actually, or this revision was very minor. There were two circulation areas addressed, and these were just comments from your, all of these revisions were to address comments raised by the board professionals. At the bottom left of the page here is where the truck access and egress is. That's what I had mentioned in my opening, the direct access to Monmouth Road. So that, that curve that I'm scrubbing with my pointer was, the curve was flattened and moved into the site farther, and that served two benefits. One is it made for a smoother movement for the trucks, as well as minimizing, in fact, eliminating any disturbance to the freshwater wetlands that are located in that, in that area. Secondly, the movement, the ingress trucks will, and John will get into this in more detail, but come along, and where they transition into Building 2, that turning movement, we smoothed that as well and added a crosswalk and a stop bar to make sure that that truck movements worked seamlessly. Otherwise, the only revisions we made were to address the technical comments from the board professionals, mostly on landscaping, but also related to the refuse enclosures. There was a question of the refuse enclosure that's located near the Route 195 entrance ramp, which is on the top left, the northern corner of the site. We had relocated, there was a question if that refuse enclosure was in the front yard, where the ordinance does not allow that. So we had shifted the refuse enclosure down to remove it out of the front yard and other small technical revisions to address the board professionals.
And other than the waiver that's required for sidewalks on Anderson Road, the revised plan is, remains fully compliant with all ordinance provisions?
That's correct. We have no variances, no waivers, with the exception of the request to waive the curb and sidewalks along Anderson Road with the provision that the funds be posted for the cost of those improvements in the pedestrian safety fund for the township.
And then one final question is the environmental commission has also reviewed these plans, and, and I believe they had no comments?
That is correct. We received a letter dated February 17 of 2021 stating that they have no immediate environmental concerns with the application.
That's all we have of Mr. Borden, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Borden, if you wouldn't mind, could you go over the state of the site right now? You have, based upon your prior approvals, you guys have done a lot of work there. So out of how many acres are being developed, how many acres have been disturbed and cleared and so forth? Could you give us an update on that, please?
Certainly. Well, the, the entire project, when you look at Phase 1, 2, and 3, which is the entirety of the project that I described, is 162 acres. Phase 1 encompasses about 72 of those acres. Of that 72 acres, approximately 48 acres is developable. Those 48 acres are under construction, as you know. Again, that is the ballfields and the hotel and the other commercial uses I described. So Phase 1 is under construction. Phase 2, the subject of this application, there has been no work done on that portion of the property.
There's been no disturbance.
There's been no disturbance to Phase 2.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Borden?
No, on Phase 2.
We're going to be talking about traffic next, right?
Yeah, Mr. Ray is here for traffic next.
Any questions from anybody from Mr. Borden? Okay.
Can you guys speak up a little bit? I was talking to the chairman, et cetera.
Sure, are you having difficulty hearing us?
Yeah, this is Andy Jones Wiki, I'm sorry.
Yes, you do sound a bit far away from the microphone.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think I got it.
Reminding me if I drift away, okay?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. I believe he's been previously sworn.
No, Mr. Ray is not.
No, I don't think I have been. Not on this one.
So, Mr. Ray, you raised your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Just brief qualifications to the.
John Ray, R-E-A, a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, traffic and transportation engineers, licensed professional engineer. My specialty is traffic engineering, and I've been qualified and testified before this board before.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ray, your office handled the Phase 1 application, the GDP application, and the prior application for this property, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
And is your office also involved with the Monmouth Ocean County Planning Board applications?
We are.
And could you just remind the board as to how the jurisdiction for Route 537 operates?
Yes, it, it's a little complicated, but when you break it down, it's really quite simple. The central line of Monmouth Road runs between the two counties, Jackson Township, Ocean County on the east side, and Millstone Township, Monmouth County on the west side. But the way the jurisdictional breakdown occurs here, Monmouth County maintains the road, maintains jurisdiction over the road until it's somewhat further to the west, down toward one of the county roads. I, I forget where the jurisdiction changes. But Monmouth County technically has jurisdiction over the roadway itself. However, the development in question, of course, is in Jackson Township, Ocean County. So essentially, both counties are involved in the review of the site plan application, the traffic improvements that are proposed for the access points to County Route 537 to Monmouth Road. So essentially, we have joint jurisdiction, and both county engineering departments are reviewing the plans. So we have a, you know, a good level of detail there involved in terms of who's looking over our shoulder and who's reviewing the plans.
And Mr. Ray, what reports, if any, have you produced in support of this application? And what material did you review to prepare for this evening?
We've prepared numerous reports over the years for the original Phase 1 application. The Phase 2 application that was approved back in, if I'm not mistaken, July of last year for the project that involved three warehouses, and I'll get into a little bit of detail on that. That was a larger project. We've also prepared traffic studies for the Kent, the last traffic study that was prepared was submitted to the Monmouth County Planning Board. They had asked us to put an overall traffic study together, just basically summarizing where we were to date with the Adventure Crossing project. That, that traffic study was dated in November 2020. That was the last traffic study that was done for this project, but we have, I tell you, we've got quite a file back at the office with a lot of traffic studies and a lot of, you know, background notes and background information.
Before I ask you to comment on the internal circulation of the site, would you summarize for the board the access points that would service this specific project?
If, if it's easy for somebody to pull up the, I guess it would be the site plan. That would, not the site plan, the overall plan, which I think is A4, the overall Phase 1 and 2 site plan. A4. A4 is the overall Phase 1 and 2 site plan.
It was part of the submission. It was part of the total, yes.
That's, that's good. That works. It's, scale's a little bit tough to read from here, but in terms of the access points to and from the property, the first access point to the property will be a right-in, right-out, it's actually just a right-in entry at the western edge of the property, which will provide access to what we're calling the elongated revised Pine Drive Jug Handle. There will also be a right-in, right-out driveway from and to the restaurant pads.
Mr. Ray, just for orientation purposes, the northern part of the exhibit, the top of the exhibit is 537?
That's correct. And 537 technically runs in an east-west direction in this area, but to the, to the top of the plan or to the north of the plan, that's County Route 537, Monmouth Road. So there's an entry at the west end of the project, a right-in, right-out driveway serving the restaurant pads. And then there's also a right-in driveway in between the convenience store, which is located at the corner of Pine Drive and 537, and of course, the signalized intersection at Pine Drive and County Route 537. There, there's also a pair of reversing jug handles to the west of our property, which is off-site, which we've proposed to do some improvements to because of the westbound traffic flow on Monmouth Road that needs the reverse direction and get back to the site. So that's, it's not really a point of access, but it's an off-site intersection which we will impact and for which we've proposed improvements.
Can you show, the, you talked about that enhanced jug handle. Can you show the board where the existing jug handle is so they have an idea of the context of how large it is compared to what currently?
The existing jug handle is relatively small. It's right in the area right where I'm indicating with my laser pointer right here. That's the jug handle that takes the eastbound traffic from Monmouth Road across Monmouth Road into the McDonald's, the Wawa, and the, the other uses that are on the west side of Monmouth Road. That's the existing jug handle. That will be replaced by a much larger, actually an internal roadway system, which serves as access to the property and actually has a roadway which runs parallel to 537, which will also serve as access for the trucks heading to the warehouse buildings that are part of Phase 2.
All right. Would you now describe in a little more detail how the truck circulation will work internally?
Okay, sure. The trucks will, probably most of them, if not all of them, will come off the Interstate 195 interchange. They will head west on County Route 537, use the reversing jug handles I spoke about before, which we are improving and widening. And they will reverse direction. They will come back to the east and enter the property at that first entrance into the service road, which runs parallel to CR 537. The trucks will travel straight through the project. They will not impact the recreational facilities that are part of Phase 1 that I'm indicating to the east of that parallel roadway. The trucks will travel through, straight through that roadway, and then access the two proposed warehouse buildings, which are part of Phase 2. So they will, there'll be some interaction with traffic that's part of the Phase 1 project. But realistically, it's just the one road that the trucks will travel straight through. They will not come down into the recreational component of Phase 1.
The scale of this is, is so small that it's hard to make out how the turns will, will actually be effectuated. But you're comfortable that there's adequate turning radius for tractor-trailer trucks throughout that maneuver that you've just described?
I am. Well, actually, Mr. Borden just testified as to flattening the curve in the one area and then making some improvements to an area in between the two warehouse buildings. In, in summary, my office worked with Mr. Borden's office to lay the turning radius templates on those curves, make sure there was adequate radii for the trucks to negotiate those curves. We, the original plans were a little bit tight with respect to the turning radii, and that was mentioned in, I know Mr. Peters' report, probably Mr. Klee as well, too. So we went back, we revisited those, those curves, we flattened them out, made them a little bit more palatable, if you will, for the trucks to circulate a little bit easier. And Mr. Borden testified to that, and as I've indicated, my office worked with his office to effectuate those improvements.
You mentioned the western jug handle. You're familiar with the fact that the applicant actually acquired land from a property owner for the county of Monmouth so that that jug handle can be expanded?
Could be expanded, yes, correct.
And in terms of loading and deliveries, will, will they also operate in the same manner as the tractor-trailer trucks that, that are entering the site?
Yeah, they will be provided, there will be separate loading docks and parking areas for employees and visitors at the two warehouse buildings so that the employee traffic and the loading and unloading that will be done at the truck docks will be separated to the extent that it's possible.
And then one last question, simply because this is a new application. Can you advise the board whether the, all the access points that you've just described will operate safely and efficiently?
They will. One of the things that we did, as I indicated before, my firm has been involved with this project and this property for quite some time. One of the things that we did was when we designed the improvements to accommodate the Phase 1 traffic volumes, we also, I wouldn't say we oversized those improvements, but we were well aware of the fact that Phase 2 would be coming, Phase 3 would be coming. And as a result, we made sure that the improvements that were proposed along with the Phase 1 project would also be adequate for Phases 2 and 3, and so we sized those improvements to accommodate the entire project.
That's all we have of Mr. Ray, Mr. Chair.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Ray? Yes, Mr. Harren.
Yeah, a question for you. That first intersection, when you're coming in off of 537.
Yes.
And, you know, basically somebody comes up and they make a left turn and they go across to Wawa.
Yes.
Is that going to be signalized?
Oh, yes, yes.
And another question, that, that straight shot across, because the trucks are going to be coming down there, and there's going to be a lot of children there. I understand you talked about the more, you know, they'll be in the ballfields, et cetera, but there's going to be fast food places there. And that's like, you know, firewater to the Indians, you know, the point of phrase. Is there anything like a speed bump's going to be on that road, 10 mile an hour speed limit, maybe some kind of guardrails on the side so kids can't cross the road? Because it's a straight shot for trucks, you know, trucks, they could speed around pretty quick, pretty quickly.
Let me back up so for a minute, because when I indicated the intersection that you were talking about. were talking about would be signalized, I wanted to make sure I didn't misspeak. The, the internal four-way intersection, which I'm pointing to right here, will initially be unsignalized, but it will be monitored for traffic signal warrants, and the geometry of that intersection is set up so that when and if traffic signal warrants are met, a traffic signal will be installed, but we, we have to wait and see whether actual warrants will be met. With respect to the traffic calming that you mentioned before, nothing is currently approved or, or proposed to provide, you know, speed humps or speed tables or anything of that nature, but I would point out that the traffic that comes into the project that is heading, in an easterly direction paralleling CR 537, will come to a stop condition at this four-way intersection, and that'll tend to, that's going to slow the trucks down. They have to come to a stop and travel through that intersection towards the two warehouse buildings, but that intersection will be monitored for future traffic signalization, and when and if the warrants are met, a signal will be installed. We've agreed to that.
Yeah, I mean, my only recommendation is that probably look heavily at signalizing because you're going to be having people come through there, and not going to do anything at all with adventure, with your adventure system, but they're going to go across the Wawa, they're going to go to the great, you know, through the other places across there, the McDonald's, et cetera.
It, it may very well be that a signal is warranted in, in the near-term future. We just don't know that at this point in time, but we made sure that when we designed the intersection, if you look at the geometry and the number of approach lanes, a signal can be installed at that location. We made sure of that, that we could install a future traffic signal fairly easily if one was warranted.
And which governmental agency would trigger the installation of that? That's still the county.
It would still be the county, although that, that property is, I think the juror, that'll, that'll be township jurisdiction, but the county will be reviewing the traffic signal warrants as well.
And the other question I have, who's going to be monitoring the traffic through there? Because you've got the trucks, you have children, you have regular carts for people that are not involved with the truck industry.
Well, we, we have no problem granting the town Title of 39 jurisdiction so they can enforce traffic violations as well, but otherwise, it's just going to be signage, I assume, right, John?
And crosswalks across that internal, and crosswalks are shown on the plan, there will be signage, people will know that it is a pedestrian crossing. You know, we, we've taken the standard, you know, provisions of providing crosswalks and signage so that people do know that it's a potential pedestrian crossing, and there could be pedestrians there at any point in time.
Okay. Yeah, my only concern was to take into consideration the children.
I understand.
And, and trucks, these, you know, match very well.
And, and just for, for the record, that, that jug handle will ultimately be dedicated to the township, so the township would have enforcement powers on the actual jug handle street. The internal streets, we would give the town Title of 39 jurisdiction. Okay, Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ernie Peters, the board traffic consultant. John, thank you for the update on, on the responsibility for the timing of the improvements. Because it's, a board member brought up a safety issue, I just want to make sure if we get to an affirmative resolution that we're, we're sort of clear on how that gets implemented. At this point, you're going to get an approval from the county that says it's okay for a four-way stop, but you're going to monitor it on a certain frequency basis. Can that be requested by the Jackson Township Police Department or governing body?
I would leave that to Mr. Alferi, but I would send the answers, yes.
Yeah, we have no issue with that, and we can make sure the county's aware of that, and if there's a developer's agreement with the county, we can include that.
And I guess I just want to sort of jump ahead, because many people are familiar with traffic lights here at the planning board from other applications. If Phase One and Phase Two were developed simultaneously, are you of the opinion that a traffic light warrant would be met at that point?
I think it's going to be marginal, Mr. Peters. That's why we, you know, we, we wanted to set the intersection up so that it could accept a future traffic signal. All of these traffic projections are based on the IT, the Institute of Transportation Engineers numbers, but we do expect that there will be a lot of interaction between the recreational uses, the Phase One uses, you know, people moving back and forth between the recreational uses and the restaurants, and we just don't know how much of the external traffic is going to come through here. So the long and short of it is, we're aware that a signal may be warranted, we're ready for it if it is, but I can't tell you when or at what time or what point during the development it's going to be warranted.
So I don't mean to drag this out any longer than it needs to, but so when you get ready to build Phase Two first, Phase One first, whichever one comes first, will you have an approval that the town can say, turn it on and it'll take nine months or a year to build? I'm trying to understand.
Right.
When the town thinks that there's a concern out there, and they go to the developer and they take their resolution of approval, how long does that take? A practical understanding of how this will occur?
I think, I think your time-
So the board and the public understand it?
I, I think your timeframe is pretty reasonable, probably six to nine months from the time somebody says a signal needs to be installed would be how long it would take to actually physically get it up and operating.
But, but the, the town won't have to wait for you to get a permit for it when they say we think we have a problem or you reach a warrant? Will you have an approval for it?
The town will issue, the town and the county, the two counties will issue the approval for this, you know, the warrants will have to be, will have to show. One of the things we need to be careful about as traffic engineers and professional engineers is that we, we, we want to make sure that when we recommend the installation of a traffic signal, that we have adequate traffic to meet the warrants so that it's all legally done in the right way, as you know, and-
I just want to make sure from the town's perspective that we don't go to the developer on January 1st, he says, well, I gotta go back to DOT and actually get the permit. So I want to make sure that we're talking about a construction timeframe. When we reach the warrant or a study's done, and you send something to DOT and they send it back in 30 days, that we can say, okay, we're going to have this done in six months, nine months, depending upon the time of year.
I think the six to nine month timeframe is probably the most likely scenario.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your input as it relates to the safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Rieger. If, if I could make a suggestion here, eventually it'll probably want to put a light. Pre-construction, I would ask that you install the sleeves, the J-boxes, the pedestal, and even go so far as to bring a power source out to the intersection. This is going to save you a ton of construction costs, but also a lot of time because when it's time to go, you're just going to have to erect your control panel, turn on your power, erect your poles, nice clean work. You're not going to be tearing up an intersection and having to deal with John Q. Public. Just my suggestion, for what it's worth, the sleeves and the upfront work are much cheaper.
Agreed. It's not only a good suggestion, it's, Mr. Borden just reminded me that's already been put into the design for Phase One, because we don't want to rip the intersection up. The conduits will be in, the junction boxes will be in, so the signal installation will be a lot easier that way. Agreed.
How about any pedestrian-controlled crosswalks?
Mr. Hudak, we have, yeah, we have provided crosswalks across that main four-way intersection.
I, I see that. I, I said pedestrian-controlled crosswalks.
Well, yeah, and if a traffic signal is installed one day, it will have to meet the current standards, meaning there will be pedestrian push buttons, pedestrian signals that will be coordinated with the crosswalks, there'll be the countdown timers for the pedestrians, ADA ramps at the, at, at the corners. It will have to be designed to meet, you know, current standards, so all that will be taken care of if a traffic signal is installed, which quite frankly, we anticipate will be the case at some point in time. So that will be, you know, factored into the pedestrian safety analysis, if you will. There will be PED signals, PED buttons, and all of those amenities.
Okay, good, thank you. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Ray? Oh, it's one.
Martin Fleming. You said the elongated jug handle is going to be dedicated to the township as opposed to the county. There are nothing, there's nothing out there that the township owns to bring snow equipment out, ice control equipment out? Are all county roads out there?
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to let Ms. Borden respond to that. He may be more familiar with-
That's a good question, because we've been, we've had to deal with that.
There is a resolution adopted by the Township Committee, July 2019, that requires the developer to do all the maintenance on the jug handle. So the right-of-way is owned by the township, but all maintenance is responsibility, including snow removal for the developer.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Anyone else?
Hi, it's Andy. I'm, I'm not an expert on this, but when we're talking about safety again, to go back a moment, everyone seems that, to say that chances are that there's going to need a, a light fixture there. Why would we wait till a problem occurred to do it?
Well, it, it's not so much that we want to wait for a problem to occur. We don't want a problem to occur. We, we just want to make sure that the signal warrants are met so that we can legally install the traffic signal in accordance with, you know, proper engineering standards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
And that concludes our direct presentation, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any other questions for any of these witnesses? No?
And, and Mr. Chair, before you open to the public, just for the record, we do have Mr. Cardinaly, who testified at the last meeting, and Mr. McFarland, the engineer, who testified present in case there are questions of either of them as well.
Do either of you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, they're, I'm not letting them add anything.
I see. Okay. All right. How about this? How about we take a five-minute break and then we'll go to public?
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Your address, please.
Allison Graff, G R A F, 948 Anderson Road.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, my question has two parts. The first part being, will the board ensure that there will be no clear cutting of the trees to take place in Phase Two of construction until any existing issue that is cited by the DEP has been satisfactorily resolved? And the second part being, can we be assured that no construction in Phase Two will begin until Phase Two is near completion?
You mean Phase One is near completion, I think?
Yes, Phase One. No, no start of Phase Two until Phase One is nearly complete.
So, response to the two questions. First, as it relates to any NJDEP issues, they're all, they're all off-site. They have nothing to do with this property. So, one has nothing to do with the other. And secondly, Phase One will be under construction, as you heard already, and this will be ready as soon as we get all the outside agency approvals, this one will start construction. So, they're going to operate independent of each other.
So then, we can't be assured that Phase One will be complete first?
No, we will not make that assurance.
But, but Mr. Alfieri, can you explain, and this may be assistant to the public, I, we had questions in our conversations as well, can you, and maybe Mr. Borden, whomever, can you articulate for the pub, public, the process that, that an applicant, a successful applicant, goes through to get a permit and begin the first phase of construction, what kind of bonding? You know, that process, that may allay some concerns. And, and I say, and the reason I ask is because there are some members of the public who pre-gave some of the questions pursuant to the notice, and that was a repeated question by a number of people.
So, in order for these warehouses to be developed, the applicant needs to get all of its outside agency approvals, which includes Soil Conservation District, the county approval, the utilities to bring water and sewer to the site, which we have brought to at least the property line. We have to post bonds with the township to assure that anything that started gets finished. We have to get tree clearing permits for any trees we remove. And we have to finish that access road to get access to the site. Without that access road, no one can get to this property from 537, so that new jug handle will be installed. But it's a complicated, lengthy, expensive process.
And as, as this resident requested, the DEP also?
Well, is there a DEP jurisdiction on anything on this portion of the property?
Yes.
Ian, could, could you elaborate?
Yes, we have currently pending a letter of interpretation application to verify the limited wetlands, as well as a general permit for a stormwater outfall.
And those are pending, so nothing, well, no construction will happen until those are issued as well?
Well, certainly, no construction can commence near the wetland boundary.
That does not mean, you, you chose those words carefully. Do you have to get the DEP okay before you begin any clearing?
You need the DEP approval to disturb the portion of wetlands or transition areas that we're seeking to disturb. Their approvals are not necessary to build on the portions of the property that they do not regulate, which is most of the project.
Right, so thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Ma'am, does that answer your question? Ma'am?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you hear your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next.
Hello?
Yes?
Oh, nope, same one.
You're muted? Are we next?
Is Ms. Rascoe?
Yes, Lascoe.
Could you please also, um, did you, uh, turn your video on, please?
Me now, again?
Um, I'm not sure I can.
Uh, we need to swear.
I'm sorry, just give me one second. Can you come back to me?
Is it joint, joint meeting?
Hovering over your name, um, you should see an icon that says Start Video. If you click that button, it will allow for your camera to be accessed.
Okay. Mike?
I didn't turn on them. Wait there, click on.
All right, Christian, you can go to the next person that was there.
Oh, we got it.
Hang on. No, go ahead, you can go to the next person.
Joyce?
Joyce is up, quiet.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? There you go.
Ah, yes, there we go.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. If you'd kindly raise your right, right hand.
Right hand.
If you'd silently swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
We're giving us your full name, spelling your last, and your address. I want to alert our tech folks that the Jollif presented an exhibit which has been pre-marked O1. So, we would also, um, you'd need to call that up for, uh, a little hour, share the screen, I guess whatever's easier. But, Ms. Jollif, if, if you would, can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
No problem. Joyce Jollif, J O L L I F F E, that's Frank, Frank E. Two Fs, two, two Ls, two X. The address is 5 Holly Tree Court, Jackson.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, uh, could you please, uh, pull up the image of the landscaping design in the exhibits, please? The one with the green, three plan of the Phase Two? I have a series of questions on that.
Is that the one you're referring to?
Which one is that?
Can you see that?
I do not see it.
That, that's A2.
I believe, that's correct. Okay. My first question is this, the lighter green section along the Holly Tree will say the first leg of the Holly Tree section coming off of Anderson Road, that is along the property line? That is the easement, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is that easement will have a rep, for around, um, around your vegetation planted on that?
That will, that's a 30-foot wide utility easement, uh, by the Ja, Jackson Township MUA. That will have no, uh, tree or shrub vegetation on it.
No more tree, shrub, or vegetation. Now, I calculate it as 38 feet, not 30, as I went out and measured it myself. Um, now, as Mr. Carnally has widened the vegetation buffer to 100 feet along that line, then technically, there would only be 60, approximately 60 feet of actual year-round vegetation, is that correct? Along the Holly Tree Court side, the first leg.
He's pulling out the plans, so give him a moment, please.
Probably.
The 30-foot easement, uh, is within the 100-foot buffer, but that is the reason that we provided an expanded buffer in that area.
Yes, I understand that. So, but you're, you're really only giving 60 feet of year-round vegetation, correct? Not 100.
Well, with, that, that is correct, within the 100-foot buffer, but we're providing more.
Yes, but you're only giving 60 feet of vegetation. Originally, you said 100 because of the fumes would be primarily affecting Holly Tree Court, correct?
Yeah, but in the area of Holly Tree Court, it is much more than the, it's actually 70, it's 100-foot buffer minus the 30-foot easement.
Well, it's actually 38 feet, and I'd like that to be noted, because I actually physically measured it, so your calculations are incorrect.
Well, it might be 38 cleared in the field today, but we can plant right to the 30-foot. The 30-foot is all that's deep, deep restricted by an easement.
Okay.
But there will be more than 100 feet there because of the, uh, of actual vegetation, because...
Well, only 60 feet, correct? Because you said 30 feet would not have actual vegetation on it, correct?
Right, we're, we're going in circles. Of the 100-foot buffer, 30 feet, uh, is in the easement that would not have vegetation, so it's a 30-foot. However, that's why we expanded the buffer, so there is up to an additional 100 feet that will be fully vegetated. That, that is why, in fact...
Where is the 100 feet? You said it was 100 total from the property line, minus the 30 feet of easement, leaving 60 to 70 feet, we'll say, if you say 30 feet, 70 feet of vegetation, correct?
Yes, but if you look in at the exhibit, it's, it's up on the, uh...
Well, that's at the 100 feet mark. I mean, you, you kind of have a various going towards the corner, but I'm talking about at the lowest point. Um, according to your sections, um, along the Anderson route, um, of your landscape vegetation sections, um, there's two sections, half of Anderson Road, according to your section, says that the existing vegetation will be removed, um, and only the two-foot berm. Um, why is that?
A review of the existing vegetation shows that much of it does not serve, in my opinion, or opinion, the purpose of, of a buffer. So, the better treatment to create an effective four-season screen is to remove not all of the existing vegetation, but some of it. Create the berm and, and plant the trees. Uh, that'll create a more effective, uh, evergreen screen as a vision by the township ordinance.
Okay. And how far from the bridge approximately down will that existing vegetation be removed? We'll say, um, you know, south on Anderson Road?
There with me.
It was not clear in the plans, unfortunately.
Yes, just bear with me for a moment, I want to measure it on the plans. From the, uh, from the, the north-eastern corner of the property, which is not the bridge, it's about 200, about 300 feet down. Uh, the first 300 feet, driving from Monmouth Road, the first 300 feet of the property would have all the vegetation, uh, preserved. In that first 300 foot, Anderson Road is actually higher than the property.
Yes, I understand.
That's what we call Buffer A on our plans. And then approximately 300 feet from the property corner, we get into, you can see it on, on the Exhibit A2 right here. So, this is Buffer A, because the road is higher than the, the property, because it has overpass over 195. And then from this point down to the corner is what we call Buffer B on the plans, which is the one that, uh, Ms. Jollif is, is describing, where we're removing some of the vegetation to create the earthen berm and double row of evergreen buffer.
Okay, so your, your evergreens, um, did not have a height, nor did you have a landscape plan in determining of height? Um, how, uh, how high are these evergreens estimated?
Upon planting, they will be a minimum of six feet, between six and eight feet. They will grow to a mature height, uh, would, I would say of, of 40 to 50 feet.
And how long does sapling maturity take?
Well, maturity would take many years. I, uh, normally, in, in this weather of Jackson, those trees would grow about one foot a year.
One foot a year, so it would take 20 years just to get remotely close to covering anything, and is that correct?
No, because one has to look at what the purpose of the buffer is. Uh, the purpose of the buffer is to screen the activity on the site, and the activity on the site are the cars, trucks, and loading docks.
Okay. But the trucks are 14 feet on an average high. If you have a two-foot berm plus a six-to-eight-foot tree at sapling state, that's only 10 feet. So, for the first good 10 years, you're not really getting even, you're still seeing the trucks, you're going to still see the movement, and you'll see the loading bays.
No, I, I disagree. In the fir, remember, that's, in that, you're going to have a 10-foot berm nearly to start the project.
Uh, you said it was only a two-foot berm, according to your, to your, did that change design?
It'll be eight to 10-foot. The height of a typical car, even a truck, even a, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the Buffer B now, which is along Anderson Road.
Uh huh, which is feet.
That's all car parking along Anderson Road.
Yeah, but you still have trucks at that very corner there.
Uh, well, we're going to get to that in a minute. So, on, on Anderson Road, it's all, it's all pedestrian cars, and maybe some pickup trucks, of course. But the, the con, the, the, and we're talking the initial stage of the, of the evergreen buffer, certainly not a matured evergreen buffer.
Yeah, of course.
Yes. It's going to screen those trees. So, even at a height of mature, height of eight to 10 feet, uh, it certainly hides every, all the activity on the site. Um, and now, when we move around the corner, as you state, on the, on the loading areas that are facing Holly Tree, that was a large part of our testimony at the last hearing recall. We have the expanded buffer, which is this triangular area that I'm describing, where we have a two-layer berm. We have two feet closer to Holly Tree Court high. We have five feet, uh, in the triangular area, which exceeds 100 foot, and that's what I was explaining about. We did that to mitigate the loss of part of the buffer within the utility easement. So, we have a five-foot high berm in there. We have four rows of evergreen trees, where two rows are required by the ordinance. And now, we, we have a much more enhanced buffer that will, from the initial plant of these trees, screen any of the truck loading activity of that portion of the building.
But you still have an eight-foot tree at sapling state at the largest, as you said, there's, to start, could be at six, with a five-foot berm, still not hitting the height of a truck, which is 14 feet high. So, I disagree with your statement. I still think that you need a much larger berm on all sides to cover this properly. And if you look at the Robbinsville, uh, Warehouse District, they have a 10-foot berm.
Right.
Now, um, I noticed that your section has states that there is a two-foot berm on the backside of Holly Tree. Uh, why, knowing that, that corner, especially when you turn there, we'll, we'll see quite a bit of truck activity, why is that a two-foot berm?
In, in this corner right here that I'm describing?
Yeah, like, kind of as it turns on Holly Tree there, um, in that corner where, you know, you kind of, yeah, that area there. Um, according to your section, it says it's a two-foot berm for Holly Tree, but then it goes to no berm down all of Primeville, um, between the Primeville people. Why is that?
Well, that is, the reason is that, again, we have our second building with the only activity on the, uh, Holly Tree side of that building is just the, uh, cars. There's, there, there are no truck activity on the east side of Building Number Two.
And where does the berm on the Holly Tree part end? At the back?
It, it...
I believe was, um, Section C?
Yes, it ends near the back of the building.
Where does it end? It, it was not clear. Um, it was said, uh, hold on. Um, Section, sorry, Landscape B was the back part of, uh, Section B was the back part of Holly Tree Court. It was not clear where that ended, which was the two-foot berm?
It's going to end at the rear of Building Number Two.
Okay, so the rest of the Primeville people will have no berm?
No, they'll have a standard evergreen buffer. It won't have a berm, but it'll have a double-planted evergreen row, and that, uh, portion, uh, Buffer C is, is along the stormwater basin.
And do berms prevent noise?
Well, I, certainly the earthen part of the berm would.
Um, but not the sound from trucks that usually, you hear the sound above because of the exhaust and stuff that usually, with semi-trucks, come up and over the top of the truck, correct?
Mr. Chair, could, to save a little time, the applicant is willing to install, instead of six feet high at, at installation, 16 feet, if that would help. Yes.
You're going to put 16 feet all the way around? I would definitely think so. I'm talking all day Anderson Road, Holly Tree, and Primeville.
Ian, can it physically be done?
It can physically be done.
All right, so the applicant will do that.
Um, my next question is that the, um, I want to play, to put the township on notice that Holly Tree Court, as well as Primeville and Anderson Road, gets severe flooding. Therefore, we would like to know, says this project is built up higher than us, how will they prevent the flooding of Holly Tree Court and Primeville and Anderson Road? We get severe flooding because of the poor grading on the street already, and no, um, no proper drainage from the town? So, how will the town, as well as this project, prevent us from getting underwater?
Well, the applicant's engineer will discuss the drainage impacts of this property. I, I, I'm not sure we're qualified to talk about anything that occurs off our site, but certainly onsite, we can address that.
He'll answer through the...
Yes, please.
Uh, yes, Graham McFarlane, professional engineer, uh, as...
Excuse me, just, you were previously sworn at the previous hearing?
Yes, I was. Yes, to answer the, uh, the questions about, about drainage, uh, all drainage will remain internal, all runoff will remain internal through the site, being collected by two detention basins, uh, discharged to the freshwater wetlands. There will be no drainage directed off-site, uh, towards Anderson Road.
So, it will be, um, discharged to the wetlands, is that what you said?
Yes, the, uh, the project includes two detention basins and, and, you know, pipe collection system that will convey the runoff, uh, to, towards that wetlands corridor, which Mr. Borden, uh, did mention that we are seeking approval of the DEP for that stormwater outfall.
Okay. And lastly, could you please pull up the architectural rendering that we had done?
That, that's the O1, that's not part of the...
No, no, I'm sorry, the one submitted by me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was wrong. You're, you're talking about the one you submitted to me today?
I, the one I submitted on Friday.
Okay, that is, that's O1, yeah.
So, I would just like to indicate to the public here of that this, this is based on the absolute, um, you know, all the information that was submitted prior to this meeting, um, by the applicant. This, this is based on architectural scale drawings.
Hang on, you may have to start that again. As I indicated to you, though, and I know you...
I'm sorry, you have to speak louder, I cannot hear you.
How's that? Is that better?
That is better, thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Alfieri, you've had the opportunity to review this particular exhibit?
Yes.
Do you have any objections?
No, so far, no.
Okay. Go ahead, and I, so can you start again? I apologize, I was trying to, we have to do this...
Totally understand.
Qualify the, the exhibit.
I just wanted to state that this is submitted that I, I apply, I provided to the town, but I just wanted the public to see of what the project as a 3D rendering would look like. This is to scale, based on all the scalable construction drawings and everything that the applicant has submitted, including their elevations, their site plans, their geography, and all their landscaping that they provided to the town. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, did you prepare the, the exhibit?
Uh, we had a professional architectural render.
And that was provided to you directly?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, just, I want to clarify one point. Uh, we talked, when I mentioned 16 feet, it, if there's no berm, the tree would be 16 feet at installation. If there are berms, the height will be 16 feet, so it'll be consistent 16-foot installation throughout.
Understood. Okay, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Travisano?
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you fix up your video also, please?
Can you give me a little clue on that?
Bottom left, usually of the screen.
You have to put your mouse arrow there first.
Start video option is typically next to the unmute button on your screen.
I just see a mute button, that's it, not a, I'll start video. How's that?
Fantastic. Mr. Travisano, if you'd kindly raise your right hand. You silently swear affirm that the information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Anthony Travisano, T R A V I S A N O, 932 Anderson Road.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, just curious, I, I know we keep talking about no truck traffic will be on Anderson Road. Is there any plans of, of the housing traffic exiting or entering on Anderson?
There'll be no access other than for emergency access onto Anderson.
Okay. Uh, I've just got another one. I, I, you, you're at Wawa or whatever, there's like a three- or five-minute idle rule. Is that going to apply at the warehouse, or can those trucks just sit there and idle all night if nobody says anything?
I, I'm looking at my notes, but I think we discussed that at the last meeting. We're going to put no jake breaking, is that the right term?
Well, that's for 195.
Or I, we're going to put no jake breaking and no idling signs, um, within the complex, and we're going to have them also located within each lease for the warehouse tenants, so that they're controlled by the landlord.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, who do we have next?
Yeah, I'm trying to... Okay, there we go. Hello?
Hello. Raise your right hand. You silently swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Sorry, I'm just trying to adjust my volume, give me a second, please. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, it's Keith Jollif. I'm at 5 Holly Tree Court, and the spelling of my last name is J O L L I F F, like Frank E. Got that, good?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, question, question I have is, um, yeah, I have some questions about, uh, who owns, who currently owns the lots at 5, 6, 19, and...
who owns, who currently owns the lots at five, six, nineteen and twenty? Just trying to get an idea of, you know, who were, you know, who's, who's our neighbors, who were, who we're dealing with, that sort of thing.
The, um, try, the lots, the, the lots which were subject to this application were originally owned by the applicant. Um, since the last, since I guess December or so, the, a condominium master deed was filed so that the three approved condos are in three separate pads. And one of those pads was transferred, title, title was transferred to a different entity. So two pads are still owned by the applicant, one is owned by a separate entity.
Okay, alright, um, so Great Adventure no longer owns those properties, I think at one time they might have, or?
Yeah, the, my client purchased all of the Great Adventure properties, um, in December of this year.
Okay, um, I, I had seen a, a, a company by the name of Jackson Owner LLC, um, owns those properties, I'm trying to figure out who that might be, um. And I'm also trying to figure out too, you said three warehouse properties, I did see something on the Ocean County website about some kind of deed filed with, you know, the condominium association, you said that was set up. I'm trying to figure out why that paperwork was even drawn up if you guys are looking for the approval of two warehouses? Well, I'm just trying to understand that, that's all.
Just for logistical purposes, um, and that kind, assuming this is approved and developed, that condominium will be dissolved because it has, it's not going to be three buildings any longer, but it allows a developer to finance, put title in different names um, of the building so that they could be either financed or developed separately.
Okay, alrighty, and, uh, another question I have, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what's really the point or the object of having, you know, a phase one, a phase two, where it sounds like you can jump around and develop, you know, whatever areas you want to develop af, you know, as, as long as it's approved by the township, obviously. I'm just trying to understand why are we giving them numbers if there's really no, as Allison said earlier, um, you have no plans to, uh, you know, complete eighty percent of phase one or whatever that number might be before you decide to start on phase two. I'm just trying to understand why we're, wha- what's the point of naming them phases?
Well, the p- a project of this magnitude is, is almost always phased simply for construction tenant purposes. Um, and a lot of the construction of the buildings is tenant-driven, so if you have a tenant that's ready on one phase, you're going to do that one before the other. The applicant is moving forward, um, pretty aggressively to get phase one started because they do have leases for many of the restaurants up front on five thirty-seven, they have to deliver the baseball fields for the summer, so there's a lot of pressure to, for them to get phase one built.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, I, I kind of understand that. I, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out with, you know, I would think, you know, if you're dealing with banks and things of that nature, banks are going to want to, you know, have some kind of idea that one part of the project's going to be completed before you start another part of the, I mean, now. Uh, that, that's, that's why I'm just trying to figure out the, the phase thing. Um, I guess the next question I have is, um, uh, the, the road by Holly Tree, the one that's kind of, um, I guess in front or behind where all the truck bays are, parallel to Holly Tree Court, is that road going to be traveled by, um, I'm assuming trucks getting into those bays and possibly emergency vehicles if, um, you know, if, if need be, um, there will be trucks driving down that road?
We, we could answer that with exhibit eight two.
Okay.
If you don't mind. If, if I understood the question, it was asking how trucks are going to traverse the rear of building number one as it faces the south.
Yeah, is it possible to pull up that exhibit? Cause I, just so I can kind of see it when you're, you're explaining it to me. So, yeah, I'm talking about the, the road that's, yeah, that's kind of, I guess that's a road like directly behind where the truck bays are on the Holly Tree Court side there. Right, yeah, that road there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so the truck traffic, as we said, is going to enter on the service road parallel to five thirty-seven. They're going to then make the first left into the back of building one. That, that's an ingress there, they're gonna, you know, park, we're back to the loading dock, and then the egress movement is going to go down that road that you described. So, so that road, if, as far as trucks go, will only be in a movement heading, uh, away from Anderson Road.
Heading away from Anderson Road, so they're not, they're not coming, they're not coming to that area. Can you explain it one more time? I'm sorry.
They're going to make the first left, uh, heading towards Anderson Road, they're going to make the first left into the loading area.
Okay, already, okay, I got you, okay.
Where the arrow is, and then as they're leaving, they're going to go.
As they're, they're leaving, they would come out of that.
As the arrow.
Closer to Anderson.
Right, and then loop back out.
Gotcha, okay, alrighty. And, uh, the, you know, the, the only other thing I wanted to say was, you know, uh, the board members threw out this option back in July of two thousand twenty, uh, just because, the main reason, numerous board members were not happy with that option because of, primarily because of these, these trucks, uh, the loading bays, um, paralleling Holly Tree Court, and I'm just trying to figure out how this option is any better of an option now than it was back in July, I feel like this, this, this is the, by far, this is the worst option.
If, if, if I could answer that, the option, this is much improved in, in, obviously in our opinion from what we presented to the board in July because listened to the board and their comments and adjusted the design accordingly. We moved the building farther away from Holly Tree Court, and we expanded that buffer both in size as well as the design.
How much more, was it like about fifty feet more, or?
I believe it was at least fifty feet more, yes.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, I guess my thought process is, you know, you could build all the berms and all the trees you want, but, I mean, diesel, diesel fumes are still going to move where they're going to move, or, or, a tree is not going to stop diesel fumes from moving into my backyard. Um, so, you know, I, I feel that, that reasoning.
And I would also circle back, uh, I believe it was your wife, we talked at length about the hundred-foot buffer and the, the effect of the utility easement. I think it's, I think it's important to remind everybody that the required buffer is not a hundred, but it's fifty. So, so, and, and, and replaying that conversation in my mind, one could take out of it that, that we had somehow less than were required because of that utility easement. In fact, we've voluntarily doubled the buffer there by fifty feet, we're only required to have fifty, we have a hundred, and then we added more to that in the triangular area, so we're, as I said early on, we have up to three times the required buffer, so we believe.
I, I agree there, you guys did, um, increase the buffer. But fifty feet or a hundred feet, come on, I mean, you really think that's going to make a difference from, you know, diesel fumes still traveling over to folks on Holly Tree Court, I, you know, I'm not a professional in this area, but it, I, 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 I mean, I think people would agree that that still doesn't seem like it's enough, you know, and just to kind of finish what, what I, you know, what else I want to say is, um, you know, I've said this at previous meetings, warehouses that do not fit into the character of this neighborhood, it's, it's all residential. I mean, I don't know how many of you folks actually drove through this area, I know the professionals have, I don't know about, you know, the, the board members, but it's, it's all residential, but in, sticking to warehouses there is, my, my wife had made a suggestion months back that, why don't we put the apartments here instead? And I, I still feel like that would be more of a viable option, but, um, you know, I just wanted to kind of mention that again. And, uh, lastly, I feel that regardless of, you know, eighty-seven people being on the call, regardless, everybody needs to be heard. There's a reason why there's eighty-seven people on this call, because we have concerns, and I feel that everybody needs to be heard, and, and you can't shut people out just because, you know, whatever reason you want to use for that. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gertner? Yes, Mr. Alfieri, before, can you also, because Mr. Joffe hit on it a little bit, his wife did. One of the other questions I saw in the pre-submitted questions, can you just describe for folks in the public how, what the process is to enforce and maintain a buffer, different than an easement potentially and the like?
Well, there, the.
I'm asking for, you know, a jurisprudential question, one on one.
So the, we're going to have to give the town a, I get, it's either a buffer or conservation easement that's going to put the obligation for maintenance on the developer, and if the developer doesn't maintain it, the town can come in, take care of it, and then assess the owner, uh, for whatever the expenses are.
And there's a notation on the plat, file plat ultimately, too.
Yes, yeah, it's on the plan as well.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted, uh, to make sure that was part of the record, uh, so, for whatever it's worth, so the public understands that it's not just simply a picture on a filed map, that there's a developer's agreement, there's other agreements that permit the municipality to enforce the maintenance of that, of that buffer.
Thank you, um, and I also wanted to, to comment that, um, nowhere did we say that, um, people would not be allowed to speak, so I don't know where you got that impression, but, um, we're going to try to get through this. That's why we're trying to limit the time and give those people that are directly affected by this, uh, application, uh, first shot at, uh, their comments. So, that being said, um, who else, um, has their hand raised that is, um, you know, part of, that have been noticed? I only want those people first that have been noticed. Good evening. I think you're muted, ma'am. No, we can't hear you. No. I don't think your microphone is working, we cannot hear you. Alright, we'll have to see if we can come back to her, do you have someone else? Uh, I don't believe that she has, um,
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. That's Deborah got, yeah.
Yes.
So we lost her.
Can you see me and hear me now?
There we go, thank you.
You're welcome, we were having a little trouble there, even though I turned it on.
Ma'am, if you'd kindly raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
My name is Deborah Scatuccio, my last name is spelled S like Sam, C like cat, A like apple, T like Tom, U like unicorn, C C I O, and my address is twenty-four Plymouth Court.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, at the last meeting, Mr. Cardinelli mentioned that he was going to tell the tenants of the warehouses that they would, could not exceed idling behind, beyond three and a half minutes. And I looked up the New Jersey State idling law, and it actually states they cannot idle beyond three minutes, so I'd like that to be put into the record, please.
I believe we discussed that earlier, they agreed to post signs, what was it, five minutes?
No, it's three minutes. The New Jersey State idling law states three minutes, and I can give you the number of the law if you would like it.
We can't violate the law, so if that's, I can't, I can't comment whether that's the law, but if that's the law, then we have to comply with it.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing is that you said that the Environmental Commission for Jackson Township had no objections. And I would like to know why, when there is so much scientific documented peer review information about this very topic available to the public and should have been unveiled, the same information should have been available to the Environmental Commission. So, the, the points I'd like to bring up about that are the following. The American Heart Association and several other organizations talk about, um, the pollution from diesel exhaust, and I am very concerned about that. And why didn't the Environmental Commission do any kind of research on this?
We, we can't answer that, we're not the Environmental Commission.
Well, they're part of the township and they're the ones who helped to make the decision whether or not to let you go forward with this project.
Ma'am, it, it so happens that the chairman of the Environmental Commission, uh, is a member of the planning board, uh, Mr. Jeff Riker. Mr. Riker, would you care to respond?
Good evening, Jeff Riker, uh, chairman of the Environmental Commission, uh, which puts me on the planning board. In regards to the diesel fumes, yes, there is research, uh. I will tell you first that I, I own several large diesel trucks. In two thousand and five, the emissions law changed, uh, the trucks that I particularly own are what they call grandfather, they have no diesel exhaust fluid uh, injection and whatnot, they're, they're the dirty diesels. Uh, those have been phased out, and according with that, you now have several different tiers all the way up to tier five. So I'll, I'll give you an example, on the trucks that everyone operates, you have opacity rules, which is the diesel soot. So, an example, the, the two thousand and six Kenworth that I own, if, if I was to go through a, a test, my exhaust pipe is black. The newer trucks that are sold currently, uh, you could run them half a million miles, and the diesel stack on those, with the injection and the new technology and the computers, they're as clean as a fence pipe, uh, like a galvanized fence pipe. So what's happening here in modern time is the older trucks are phased out, and once they're out of service, they're done. So, uh, what you're seeing is tier four and five engines coming online, which greatly reduces the opacity, which greatly reduces the tonnage of soot that you see, and that, that's the modern world, and yes, we, we have done the research. While, you know, we can never guarantee that there's nothing going to happen, these new engines are the most efficient that you're, you're ever going to see, uh, as far as soot reduction. Uh, I hope that does help you, and yes, we do take a look at these kind of things.
Well, are you going to then enforce that, uh, trucks only be allowed in this facility that do meet the more modern standards? Or are you going to allow any kind of trucks to come in and out of this facility?
We have known, the Environmental Commission has zero enforcement ability, to begin with. The enforcement ability comes from the Fed, uh, and the way they're doing that is they're phasing out the old trucks, so once those grandfathered engines die, so does the truck, uh, you can't go, you can't go back and recreate the wheel. So as modern world is progressing, uh, you'll, will see less and less and less of those. Give you an example, in, uh, the ports in Newark and Elizabeth, uh, those trucks are no longer allowed in there. Uh, it's just a modern way of, of things happening, and it's all done by the Fed, it's not done by the state, it's not done, done by the local jurisdiction. Uh, the Environmental Commission here in Jackson does not have any enforcement authority, it's by the Fed.
So then what is the purpose of the Environmental Commission if they don't have any authority in our town?
It's, it's set up by state law, uh, we are to review various different components with, uh, uh, I regret that I can't regulate anything, that's why we have code enforcement.
So then how does code enforcement decide what they're going to regulate in our town? Somebody has to be responsible for the citizens of Jackson to make sure that these, the exposure to this diesel exhaust is not going to make the residents of the greater Anderson area sick.
So, uh, if I may, ma'am, uh, Sean Gertner, um, that's the purpose of a hoped-for, well-developed resolution um, to maintain compliance, but tho- that, those compliance issues merge with other state and federal laws, other state and federal jurisdiction. So I think Mr. Riker, who may well be the, you know, just based on, as a, he's a layperson here, but he has some, uh, knowledge regarding the diesel engine certainly, is giving you the best answer, that it appears um, based on his knowledge and experience, that most of the enforcement issues with regard to use of those engines comes from the federal government.
Which leads back to my previous question, how are you going to guarantee us, the citizens of Jackson, that the trucks that are coming into this facility are not going to be the older trucks that do not have the better equipment on them?
We cannot control that, Jackson cannot control that. These trucks are inspected by the state, uh, that, uh, they, they originated from. Um, the state troopers enforce these, they, they inspect them, you know, the, I, I. You know, I, I think you're concentrating somewhere out of our control.
Well, see, that's one of my problems here with this project. If everything is out of your control, then how did you allow this project to continue with these warehouses right on top of the homes of residents?
Well, we, we're.
Didn't it bother you to think that maybe this exhaust would be going right over the homes of these families? I'm not, I'm not an expert in diesel, but I do do research. And I found a lot of information that pertains to the fact that the wafting of the diesel fumes can go up to 1,000 feet from the actual area of the, the project itself.
Ma'am, Mr. Alfieri, you address, if you can please address the nature of the application, the fact that it's, that its jurisdiction is vested in the planning board, and explain how that works with regard to the use that you're proposing.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure that this witness is, lives within 200 feet, because I just looked on the 200 foot.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I, I thought the other people went ahead of me.
We'll keep going. So the, to answer your question, number one is, this board can only enforce township ordinances. Any, any state or federal regulations that impact the use of this property is not the township's responsibility. This applicant has filed a fully conforming application, and therefore, it's our position that we're entitled to build it. Number two, we already have a larger project approved, which they could build tomorrow if they wanted to. We've, we've come back with an improved project, and, and with smaller building, less parking, and more buffering.
Okay, I think we have to move on. Next resident that is within the 200-foot notice.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, oh, yes.
I don't think we can get, it's my application.
Yeah, I, I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. If I can just ask that it be carried with no additional notice and a waiver of time.
Yes.
So Mr. Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, and for members of, of the public who are on, we're just moving a agenda item quickly. Item number two on today's agenda.
Block 19501, Law 35, Solomon Zolti Investments. It appears that due to the hour, we're not going to be hearing this application, so we need to reschedule this to a later date. And Denise, do you have any dates in mind?
Mr. Chairman, quite, quite, Mr. Chairman, quite frankly, I think with the schedule and what we're attempting to, to do with regard to finishing that affordable, I, I think that the board is best, and quite frankly, to be fair to the applicant, he's been carried already, is to have this scheduled for May 3rd.
Okay. Is that acceptable?
May 3rd?
May 3rd.
May 3rd. That's the first available date, first available date.
Yep. I'm sorry. May I have a motion to carry this application to May 3rd, please?
Move.
And that's with no, no additional notice and a waiver of time?
No additional notice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I know you just said it, that members of, but I gotta go through this. Members of the public who are here on this application, they are directed to the municipal website or places of municipal posting to participate via the virtual hearing on May 3rd, 2021. And you waived time, correct?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go through the roll call? I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt.
Yeah, I did call for a roll call.
Okay. Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker? Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring? And Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay. I know she, I think she.
This is the, the woman that you couldn't communicate with before?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes. Can you see me?
We can hear you. Who is this?
This is Mike Glasgow, on 944 Anderson Road, Jackson.
Okay. Can you please turn your camera on, please?
Okay, more. Okay, how are you?
Hi, there you go. Were you noticed regarding this application?
I was.
Thank you.
Mr. Glasgow, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board shall be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address.
My name is Michael Andrew Glasgow. My last name is spelled L-A-S-K-O. And I reside at 944 Anderson Road in Jackson, New Jersey.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Are you ready for my question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. All your testimony has been, all traffic improvements and studies have been done on 537 west of the bridge, jug handles you're talking about, traffic signals, pedestrian crossing. Anderson Road and 537 east of the bridge. I had asked this question, I believe, last February, we had a meeting. And I really didn't get any answer about any studies or improvements that were going to be taking place on the east side, on the corner of Anderson Road and 537. I mean, you're going to have a, a lot more traffic, a lot of kids playing baseball, I'm sure buses and everything going around. And we've also seen it a, a large problem with the great adventure traffic. I think it was in October where, I guess, GPS are sending everybody down Anderson Road. So my question is, if, if there's any improvements planned or going to be done or studied, it's been a year since I asked this question, on the east side, Anderson Road, 537.
So we're going to call Mr. Ray back up, our traffic engineer.
And I'll try to answer that question as best as I can. First of all, we are aware of potential impacts to Anderson Road, and that's why, as has been testified to tonight, and if we review the plans, no access is being proposed to Anderson Road from this project other than just an emergency access for inbound vehicles only. So we've taken that step. With respect to Anderson Road, the intersection of Anderson Road and Route 537 has been a, a known issue, if you will, for 30, 35 years. Monmouth County Engineering Department authorized a Carter study on Route 537 some time ago. I couldn't tell you exactly when it was, but they studied the intersection of Anderson Road and Route 537. They recommended several different possible alternatives to improve that intersection. If you live on Anderson Road, you know what I'm talking about, trying to cross Route 537, or make a left turn onto 537 is very difficult during peak hours. The county has been looking at that. It's what I would consider to be a regional issue that needs to be addressed by the county. It's been a known issue for 30, 35 years. You really, really should probably reach out to Monmouth County to get a better idea of what they may or may not be proposing for Anderson Road and for that intersection. It's on the county's radar, but I can't tell you when anything's going to be done. And it's been on their radar for quite some time.
But as, well, for the township, that's not a concern of them to, to maybe make this, you know, safety-wise happen, and, and, or, or even the developer looking to making this a safer area. I mean, we have a lot of accidents down at that.
Reasons why we eliminated access to Anderson Road was because of, you know, pressure.
No, I understand what you're saying about the Anderson, I'm talking about Anderson and 537, where, like I said, you're going to have a lot more traffic heading west, coming from Freehold area, or, or Millstone, or, or, like I said, Castle, you know, that whole area. My question is, and it seems like everybody's saying, what's this, guys? It's, it's Jackson, it's Ocean, it's Monmouth. Like I said, you're doing a, a huge project and doing great traffic, jug handles, and pedestrian crossing on one side, and just ignoring a side where you're going to have a large amount of traffic.
Well, it's, it's not going to be a large amount of traffic on the, if you want to call it the north side of 195. Certainly, the warehouse project that we're talking about today, we anticipate that the overwhelming majority, certainly of the truck traffic, is going to be oriented to and from the interstate. And that's why this is a good location for a project like this. It's not going, there's not going to be a lot, if any, of that traffic, certainly on Anderson Road or north of 195. We do think some of the employees that work at the site are going to be, you know, maybe people that live to the east of here, and they'll travel Route 537. But the overwhelming majority of the traffic is going to be oriented to and from 195, to, to this project, and, and not east or north of 195. There will be some traffic, no question.
There's going to be, there's going to be a large, you're going to have a super amount of traffic. You have the hotel, you're going to have people going to the restaurant. They're not just going to be coming from the west and 9, I-95, they're going to be coming from the east, Freehold, coming from the Parkway, picking up, coming off of 9. I mean, you're going to have a lot of people traveling here. I really think that's, for safety reasons, that's something the town should usually be looking at, that intersection.
Okay, well, I, I've answered it to the best of my ability, just to, you know, traffic coming from the Parkway will be traveling along 195, and will be, you know, won't impact Anderson Road. But local traffic, you know, will impact Anderson Road. People that live in Jackson that are coming to the site will probably use Anderson Road or some part of it. But that's the best I can answer your question. We understand the concerns of the Anderson Road residents. That's why we've cut the access off to Anderson Road. We're doing everything we can to limit the impact to the folks that live on the road.
Any other questions, sir?
No, that was it.
Thank you. Who do we have next? With their hand raised, that is a notice resident.
Hello. My name is Tracy McKinney. Last name is spelled M-C-K-I-N-N-E-Y. And I'm a new resident at 7 Holy Tree Court.
So I, I apologize. We got to go through that again.
That's okay.
Can you kindly raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
I apologize, but if you can give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Tracy McKinney. Last name is spelled M-C-K-I-N-N-E-Y. And my address is 7 Holy Tree Court. I'm a brand-new resident here to Jackson.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
So I have a couple of questions on the EIS statement that I wanted to go through, primarily section 1, 2, I believe, 4, and 7. So hopefully, there's someone there that can answer that. But paragraph 1.1 in the introduction, paragraph 5, it does state that, and I apologize if you guys have gone over this, but again, I have a new resident, it states that this is not located within the pineland areas. My question on that part is, has this been sent to any, has any biological or technical data been sent for this development to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, since they define what is a crucial habitat, and pinelands and wetlands would be considered a crucial habitat? And if so, what were their findings?
Ma'am, I'm, I'm having difficulty understanding.
Is that a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll start over. So I'm looking at the EIS, and I'll start with section 1 under project description. And I'm looking at 1.1, paragraph 5. And it states on there that this is not located within a pineland area. My question on that is, have you sent any biological or technical data for this to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, since they define what's a crucial habitat, and a, a pinelands would be considered a crucial habitat? So if you did, what were their findings?
I believe we have the author of the EIS here.
Yes. As part of doing the EIS, we receive the land, what's called the landscape data from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, which is, they provide a report of the threatened endangered species in the area, and that is included. Otherwise, threatened endangered species are not regulated. The Fish and Wildlife Service has no jurisdiction to any land use project in this situation, because we're not in CAFRA. And the TNE, the threatened endangered species, the only regulations on the property are through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, through the freshwater wetlands permitting. They have already determined that the wetland buffer on this property is exceptional resource value, or 150 feet on the southern portion of the property, because it abuts larger wetland areas on the Six Flags property.
So the U.S.
In addition, the Environmental Commission did ask some very detailed questions on wildlife mitigation on the property. And we had provided those responses. So I believe that the project has been very responsive to those portions of fish and wildlife that are regulated.
But was the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service contacted, and did they, just, did they let you know that this was not a crucial habitat, since they are the people that do define that when it comes to any building, or, you know, anything that comes to any, anything like this with environments and plants and animals and species? That is actually their job and their jurisdiction to decide what is a crucial habitat. Have they been contacted, and did they give you a finding on that?
They, they have not been contacted, nor do they have any jurisdiction on this project.
Do you have an MOU with them? A memorandum of understanding with them and the development of the national habitat area, because it is pinelands and wetlands?
Can you ask that?
I was asking if you have an MOU with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I know you say that they're not involved, but.
They have jurisdiction over the property, so we wouldn't have an MOU with them.
All right. So has, I know you're saying they're not involved, but I'm still going to ask, have the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, or the New Jersey DEP, or any biological or biologist conducted recent surveys within the wetlands and pinelands during the appropriate time intervals that are accepted by any applicable agencies? And what that would go over is any species of plants breeding season and non-breeding season for specific animals that may be affected by this?
We have already been notified by the, by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection that the off-site wetlands to the south are potential habitat for threatened species, particularly the barred owl. And for that reason, as I said, we have 150-foot wetland buffer.
Is that the only location that they have looked at, or have they looked at the entire area, and that's the only location that they find that?
That, that is the only area of the site that there's any, they have any jurisdiction on. This area is regulated under the Freshwater Wetlands Program.
So who has jurisdiction to make sure that there's no environmental impact on any endangered species on the rest of it?
That's correct.
So who would, who would oversee the rest of that land for environmental impact reasons? Who sees that there's no endangered species or anything on the rest of the land, other than the wetlands?
On, on the upland portion of the property, there is no jurisdiction by any agency.
There's no federal jurisdiction to make sure that there are no endangered species, plants, or animals?
That is correct. And that is why, in that section 1.1, as you correctly point out, I make the affirmative statement that the property is not located. I make the affirmative statement that the property is not located within the CAFRA zone, nor is the property located within the pineland zone. Because both of those permitting programs contain policies within their regulations that regulate threatened or endangered species throughout the property.
Has a state or federally approved and federally approved biologist been out to survey the entire land? Because federal government does have regulation over land, over state regulation.
Correct, there is no jurisdiction in the upland portion of the property.
You're saying the federal government has no regulation over that property?
That's correct.
The chairman of the Jackson Environmental Commission here. He is a member of the planning board, he would like to comment.
Yes, please, thank you.
Ma'am, my name is Jeff Riker, I'm your environmental chairperson for Jackson. And I'm also on the planning board. Ian, if, if you could, just touch on the, what you and I go back and forth with on any project that comes before, the overlay zones, the TNE. The, ma'am, I'm gonna ask Mr. Borden to go through it. But there are resources that are provided by the state of New Jersey through the DEP that are common access for you, for me, as a layperson, for the professionals. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Borden just to go through what he does to create that EIS and what we're looking for. And then, as an adjunct, I'm gonna ask Mr. Borden to reiterate what I asked him for through the board, the Environmental Commission, excuse me, in a, in a means of best practices in what his response was and what Mr. Card now's response was to those requests. I think that would be beneficial to what you're looking for and how that information comes to myself, to the board, to the applicant. And it's also available to John Q. Public very easily. Mr. Borden?
Oh, sure. Well, first thing is, even before we investigate the actual site itself, we research the, the published data. That would be the land use information from the township, the master plan, the county master plan, the state master plan, the state development redevelopment plan, as well as the presence of any regional planning agency like CAFRA or Pinelands, as I noted before. And, and, and then we get into some more details with the DEP database, particularly the landscape project, as I testified, where we do a heritage database search and understand what type of species may be present on or near the property, followed up by site inspections that, that myself does of any property. We obviously delineate wetlands, submit the appropriate applications to the state to determine the buffers, any regulated activities. And then, once we compile the EIS, we submit that to the Environmental Commission as well as the planning board. In this case, we had a back and forth with the Environmental Commission that was very helpful. They had asked some very pointed questions on the wildlife and our mitigation strategies. That led to a discussion, as I just testified too, about the landscape project and its findings. In addition, there are some activities that we're seeking to do through the Audubon Society on the property, even as part of the development. They are involved helping us on the project with possible nesting boxes for not, not threatened or endangered species, but we're trying to make a very, very wildlife-friendly project while we develop it in accordance with the master plan of the township.
Okay, anything else, ma'am?
Yes, I do have one. Going on to section 2.5, surface water. It's down on the very last paragraph of that page, which would be the fourth page once you've started. It says approximately 30 resident wells are located within 500 feet of the site. My well is one of those. So my question for you. Sorry, I gotta find it because I'm jumping around a little bit. You said you did delineation. Sorry, I lost my page. Have you done a hydraulic analysis to verify that it will not affect the well and groundwater? And what were the results of this analysis?
Right, not necessary in this case because our project is serviced by public water.
Correct, but any runoff from that water, including any diesel oil or anything that goes into the ground, will be running off and potentially affect our wells. So that's why I'm asking if there was any kind of hydraulic analysis done to ensure that our wells are not contaminated. And if they are, what is the plan moving forward? Will the developer be responsible for either putting us on to the public water at that point? And they'll be responsible for all finances of that?
I think that ties into the stormwater design. The stormwater design obviously has many layers it has to conform to. The first layer is water quality. And, and this project, we have the state stormwater management regulations and their best management manual. And this property, as Mr. McFarlane had testified, provides stormwater management to properly address the water quality standards, which means the water quality storm is retained on the property.
So if that is faulty though, and it does affect our well water, will it be in any kind of contract that he will be responsible for then either fixing our wells and be financially responsible for that? Or for putting us on that public water system at his cost? Because the, if it's a direct pollution from this, you know, the situation that you guys are building over there?
We can't give you legal advice on who's responsible for what. We just have to comply with the stormwater management regulations and the township ordinances. If something goes wrong, there, you, you probably have a remedy, but I, I'm not, we can't give you that advice.
What I'd also say is, from a natural drainage system perspective, the water from this property runs off in the direction opposite your house. It does not run towards Anderson Road, it runs towards the west.
However, if there's flooding or any kind of default for any reason environmentally or not, if there's a bust in some sewer lane, right, you know, pipe that you guys have and it comes and affects our water, will you be assisting in any financial hardships? And will you be paying to put us on the public water if it is directly affected by, you know, your facilities?
We, and we can't give you advice on who's, who has liability tonight.
So he will have no liability if that facility?
I'm not saying that, we're just not gonna give you legal advice on what would happen.
Okay. On to section 7.0. You guys have a list of application and permits. You have on there that federal, there's no permit, is there none required?
It's not required, that's correct.
Okay, it is on a wetland, not just a pineland, but a wetland. Did you get a jurisdictional delineation and was that sent to the Army Corps? And did they approve this delineation?
The jurisdictional delineation is, is approved by the NJDEP and it's currently under review.
Okay, did the Army Corps get a copy of that?
Army Corps, the state regulates freshwater wetland under their water certificate from the Army Corps. The Army Corps is, has, has no jurisdiction on this project.
Okay, do they have the paperwork though, if they've been notified of this at all?
They are not notified on a project basis. It's my understanding the, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection provides, I believe, an annual report to the Army Corps on their permitting activities. But that's done at the state level. All throughout the entire state of New Jersey, all of the wetland permitting is done directly through the NJDEP.
It does say that the project will not generate extra pollution. However, you do counter that later, or an extra traffic. You do counter that later. Have tests been conducted? And I'll, I'll find where you countered it because I wrote it down. Have tests been conducted that would uphold this statement for the 24/7 truck traffic and traffic redirection, idling trucks? And has the NJDEP Bureau of Air Monitoring released compatible scenarios to uphold this statement? 5.0, item number three, states that decrease in air quality will happen due to the increased traffic. So in one section, you state that it will not affect the air quality. But then in section 5.0, item 93, you clearly state that it will decrease air quality. So what has been done to do air monitoring in a comparison to a situation in another town that may have the same amount of trucks, idling and traffic?
I think when you're dealing with any land use, you'll always find a statement that air quality is decreased by any project. However, those decreases are mitigated primarily when you're speaking of air traffic. That ties in closely with the traffic engineering design because air quality impacts arise from congested traffic or delays. It's where you have those failed intersections or delays that you have carbon monoxide concentration and decrease in air quality. So thereby, by satisfying traffic concerns, we, at the same time, satisfy air quality concerns. And the only other air quality concern that one would have on a project like this would be of the idling of vehicles, which has been addressed by the representations made by the applicant not to have that and, and to enforce the appropriate laws and regulations.
And ma'am, we have dozens and dozens of people that care to comment on this. We're gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Sorry, I just lost you on my Zoom, can you still see me?
I'm sorry?
Can you still see me?
Yes.
Okay, because I lost you on my side. Final question, I guess, for now is, are you planning on extending the road? 537? Sorry, I just moved here. That overpass and the Monmouth, is that going to be extended? Are those routes going to be widened at any point to accommodate not only the extra traffic, but the extra trucks? Since they are not very wide, I know you're doing, you know, the loop arounds. But are you planning on extending the road out at any time? And will that be done as part of this construction?
Mr. Ray just answered that question previously and the answer is no, that's a county function and they're studying it, but we're, this applicant has no obligation to do that.
Okay, that's it for now, I guess.
You have to move on, thank you so much.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
For some reason, I, you can't see me, can you see me?
No, we cannot.
Okay, let's see if I can fix that. Start video. Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Good. Let me raise my right hand and do all that first?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Ma'am, do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, so help me God.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
My name is Aurs John Bayan, A-U-R-S-B-A-Y-A-N. I live at 846 Primeville Road.
Thank you, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, I'm like Tracy, my concerns have a lot to do with my well and my septic. We do get a lot of flooding over here. It's not bad enough that you hardly, if ever, take care of this dirt road that I live on. I have no access to utilities. I don't want city water, but I want my well protected. I also want to, I wanna know if you're aware that they've added 40 species to the threatened list for the DEP on their website. They just added 40 new species, three of which are sparrows that I know for a fact I most likely have in my yard because I have countless photos of all of the wildlife in my yard. Tree frogs, the wetland frogs, everything that, you know, is in my yard. And I'm concerned about whether or not DEP is aware of all the species that are being affected by this development. Not only that, but like Tracy said, you know, would they incur the cost if something happens to our well? And would they, you know, hook us up to city water? I'm sorry, I don't want city water because I don't want that monthly bill. So I just want my well protected. I see that they're draining into that, you know, the drainage ponds there. But we are on an aquifer that covers the most of the state of New Jersey. I just read an article from Yale EDU on this specific aquifer that we are on, 3,000 mile stretch. I don't believe in good conscience that you could state to me that our aquifer is gonna be protected when we are destroying all the trees, the roots that hold the water. We're destroying the wetlands, we're, you know, using diesel fuel, we're, we're pouring, we're, it's just gonna be a mess. On top of the traffic on 537 and Anderson Road, you can't get onto 537? Now as it is, it took me 27 minutes to get from the Wawa to my house during the summertime when Great Adventure is around. You know, and with the, with the outlets during the Christmas season and the holidays, it's a nightmare. And this is just gonna add to that nightmare. I didn't hear anybody mention that we're entitled to quiet enjoyment of our property by law. So where is it exactly that this fits into my quiet enjoyment? If you have any history of my property, you'll know that I did not buy this property for the house that sits on it. Okay, I bought the property for the seclusion, for the wildlife, for everything around me, for the well, for the septic and everything else. And I've replaced those things and now I'm being threatened by your water drain runoff for nothing more than to line somebody's pockets. And this plan that, that you've introduced has changed a dozen times. And it seems that every time we come here to the township meeting for approval, it's on a different plan. Oh, well, we switched this round, we switched that around, we switched that. How can you, in, in, in good conscience, say that you've done all of the, the recommendations, all the reports, all of the, the test studies and everything else? When every time you turn around, you're changing the plan? I, I, I'm baffled. I'm really baffled how the township and everybody wants to say, not in my backyard? I'll bet you would say, not in your backyard, but it's okay in my backyard, right? This was a secluded area, this was wildlife, this was 300 acres that you're clear cutting. I've got turtles in my yard, I've got ringneck snakes, I've got stick bugs, I've got butterflies, I've got all kinds of birds. I've got red-headed woodpeckers, gray hawks, I've got things that are threatened in my little quarter, acre and a quarter here, not 500 feet from this project. So there's no way on God's green earth that you're telling me that none of that wildlife has been destroyed with all this clear cutting and everything that's going on and all the concrete and blacktop and everything else that you're gonna put in that area? The turkeys, the deers, the foxes? They, they're gone now. Although we do have a coyote that's eaten a stray cat, thank you for that.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just from a meeting management standpoint, could the attorney review for the public the, the purpose of the public hearing process as it relates to access to the applicant's professionals and as, you know, or the balance of being able to ask questions about the professionals and contemporaneous commentary? So we can dovetail that together for greater efficiency tonight?
So the, we just discussed that with the, I just discussed this with the chairman as well. So generally speaking, the public is given up to five minutes to provide a public comment and/or their questions. The chairman and the board have some leeway. If someone's asking specific questions that directed to the applicant's professionals, or ours for that matter. Certainly, the chairman has been giving a proper leeway, in my opinion. But it's not necessarily for just a filibuster. And if that's sort of the point we're trying to get at. But I guess we respectfully remind the public that if you have a, only a comment, that it'd be limited to five minutes. And that if you have questions, to not give, make sure that those questions get out first because we don't wanna lose the opportunity to ask those questions.
And just to be clear, it has nothing to do with the filibuster. The transparency is very important in open government, but to be able to access the professionals that are here to, to provide answers to key questions and the folks that are trying to get through, the dozens that are still in line to share their questions that are germane to the actual application.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, thank you for your comments.
Okay, well, why is there no berm now behind Primeville Road, behind our properties?
Ma'am, we've given you way past the allotted time, we have to move on. We still have 70-some-odd people that are standing in line, thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Hello?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Could you turn your camera on, please?
Okay?
Yes, thank you. Sir, if you'd kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the questions, comments, information, or testimony you're about to present before the board, uh, cognizant of now, again, and we repeated the five-minute rule, um, will be representative, truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name?
Name is Vincent. Last name is Scatuccio, spelling is S-C-A-T-U-C-C-I-O, 24 Plymouth Court, Jackson.
The street address, I apologize, I spoke over.
Twenty, twenty-four Plymouth Court, Jackson.
And, and how far are you from the subject property?
We are fo- five and a half miles from the, uh, the property.
Sir, I, I said numerous times that we wanted to, uh, get the people that were closest and notified to this project to testify first. So I'm gonna cut you off right here.
No, you, you picked me. I didn't, I didn't.
Only those people that have been noticed should be raising their hands at this time. The other people, please put your hands down.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, hi. I'm trying to get the video working here. Can you see me?
Yeah.
Patient, one second.
Ma'am, before we get started, were you, um, noticed regarding this application?
I am one house over from the people that were noticed.
Thank you.
And I am having trouble getting it to do video. Is it possible to, okay, wait a minute, start video. Hold on, come on back. There we go.
There you go. Thank you.
Here we are. Okay, so, um, I live at nine sixteen Anderson Road, Jackson, New Jersey. My name is Jane Greenwood.
All right, and you solemnly swear or affirm that the questions, comments, testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, I would like to expand on the traffic concerns. Um, we have a bridge right around the curve of the road with very low tonnage capacity, and my concerns are, last summer, we had GPS, as, um, Mr. Alasko mentioned briefly, sending people to the safari down our road. Uh, do we have any guarantees or assurances that this won't happen, and we're going to have the trucks being sent by GPS to the warehouses down Anderson Road?
Um, we, unfortunately, we, none of us have any control over what happens to the vehicles once they enter the, the road system, whether it be through the township or the county. All, our obligation is to get them onto the road safely and efficiently, and then from there, we lose control of it.
Well, that's not totally true, because when GPS was sending the traffic to Prineville Road this summer in an attempt to see the safari, um, Great Adventure was able to contact GPS and have the problem corrected, and the police department was able to contact GPS. So we'd like some kind of assurance that GPS is not going to automatically send trucks instead of going out to the light on 571. GPS normally takes the shortest route. We don't want them making a left off of 571 onto Anderson and being sent that way to get out to 537, and again, impacting that already troublesome corner down, um, by the outlet mall.
If, if that situation were to occur again, you can contact the developer, and he can do the same thing that Great Adventure did and try to address it. Uh, but again, we have no control actually of what GPS does, other than we can contact them if there's an issue.
Could we contact them before there's an issue and have some kind of assurance that GPS will not send them down Anderson?
We, we can attempt to. I can assure you that we'll be successful, but we can attempt to.
I'd appreciate an attempt. And I understand there's eight hundred and ninety-four parking spaces for the employees. Am I correct?
Indeed.
That's a lot of employees. Not everybody's gonna come 195 or 537 or the turnpike. Some are gonna come from the ocean area and use 571, and again, use Anderson. Is it possible to put speed bumps, which were talked about previously, on Anderson Road? This would slow people down, and it would keep them out on 571 going to the light and away from the residential area of Anderson Road. Is this a possibility?
Ma'am, we have, uh, councilman, I'm just going to ask a question. Yes, Ernie, is there a weight restriction on the Anderson Road?
There is on that bridge, yes.
But on the road itself, is it a four-ton road?
I don't know what the weight on the bridge is. I believe it's one ton.
All right, Ernie Peters, um, Councilman Fleming, I don't have that information at my disposal. We can certainly find out and report back, and if necessary, install that or add that to any affirmative resolution the board may adopt.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm a little confused. Ed what?
So, ma'am, the recommendation might be during deliberation, um, that the, uh, planning board asks the municipality to review, um, whether or not Anderson Road does in fact have a weight limit, and if it does not, uh, to add it to the, uh, to a list for the township engineer, uh, to potentially add a weight limit on the road. That could be a planning board recommendation.
I would appreciate that. Okay, and then, um, someone else had briefly touched on the bridge, um, going over towards McDonald's. I, I don't think that bridge is wide enough. It's obviously gonna have to be widened. Um, is that part of the traffic study that was done down at that corner? Do you know, Mr. Ray? Because that bridge can't handle its two lanes. It can't handle the traffic that will be generated.
I just want to make sure. We're talking about the bridge, the 537 bridge over 195?
Correct.
Okay, that's part of a, an interstate highway interchange that, uh, the county and the NJ DOT are basically, you know, responsible for taking care of. We've looked at the bridge. We still think, and we firmly believe that, you know, most of our traffic is gonna come onto and off the interstate, so the bridge will be impacted to some extent. But that interchange, uh, has been the subject of the county and, most important.
Yes, for many years, but nothing ever seems to get done. On Fright Night, it, the traffic's halfway to Freehold.
Well, some.
And that's for your hotels and everything else are added.
Something was done. I guess it was ten or fifteen years ago, the state did have a project to widen the ramp from the eastbound off-ramp and turn it into a two-lane exit, uh, onto 537 westbound. So they did do something, but they didn't, uh, they didn't widen the bridge.
But they've never acted on anything. Um, it's just, the additional traffic, this area cannot handle it, is my statement. And one more question, um, the noise from the side-loading trucks at the last meeting, um, side-loading was denied, and you reserved the right to bring it back up again, which you're doing now with your new plan. Originally, your warehouses had all the loading being done behind the warehouses, which would abate a lot of the noise. I don't understand why now we're going back to side-loading when it was already denied side-loading and said that this was a terrible idea.
Clarify, there, there was never a denial of a side-loading. We tried to introduce at the very last minute, at the last application, a, a different plan, um, and that the board commented at the time that they didn't want to consider it, because it wasn't part of the application package. There were comments about the loading, um, as you described, but it wasn't a denial.
Okay, but there were comments that they did not think it was a good idea for the residents of Anderson, that the noise level would be, uh, beeping all night long, twenty-four seven, as trucks back up. No one would sleep. Uh, you would destroy the quality of life for the residents if you have side-loading.
And that's, um, this plan, we've attempted to address those concerns by redesign.
Yeah, trees don't stop noise. Okay, that's not gonna stop the noise of the trucks. All right, thank you. I guess that's all I have to say.
We're gonna take, I think we have one more person, one more resident, um, that has been noticed with their hand up. Is that correct? All right, so we're gonna hear that person, and I, and I, again, I want to reiterate, we need to try to limit to five minutes. Uh, wait a minute, this gentleman is not, um, within... He's the last one with his hand up. All right, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Houdak, before we continue, um, could I just ask that if the public has any questions, they just wait until the professionals answer? I'm just having a hard time keeping the record clear, because it cuts off people in the building as soon as somebody on Zoom starts talking over them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're ready for me this time?
Yes.
Okay, I think I already sworn in. Name is, again, Vincent Scatuccio, spelling is S-C-A-T-U-C-C-I-O, I'm at twenty-four Plymouth Court, Jackson, in the South Knolls Development, senior development. So my question is to the team and Mr. Carnelli, when you looked at the number of trucks that are coming into this area, and we talked about, some other people talked about, the diesel fuel and pollution, have you looked at the studies that have been out there? I just did a quick old, quick Google search a couple of weeks ago, and I found eight studies on diesel fuel. Six in them in the United States, four, two of them were from Italy. Those, those studies link MS, is the, the most important thing that Mr. Carnell is just hap, uh, concerned about, okay, to diesel fuel. Now, you say we only got three minutes. That three-minute law for, is for parking, or when you're, when you start, when you park your vehicle, and you can't idle more than three minutes. That's the state law. However, if you got trucks lined up, ready to come into the facility, they do not have to shut off by state law. They can keep on running. So you're gonna have exhaust fumes, and exhaust fumes affect that area tremendously. I have a grant student that lives, lives right there. I mean, I'm very concerned about him, and the board members should be concerned about the people of Anderson. It's a shame what you guys are doing to that community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman.
To Mrs. Greenwood, um, Anderson Road does have a four-ton weight limit, its entire length, so that by itself should control the truck traffic on the Anderson Road.
Okay.
Thank you, and thanks to Mr. Peters.
Okay. We are back in session. Who do we have with their hand raised? Anyone? Okay.
Hello?
Hello?
How are you?
Okay, would you mind turning your camera on, please?
Not at all. Let's see.
There you go.
All right, good evening.
Evening, sir. If you'd raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the questions, testimony, information, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
All right, my name's Preet Pals. Last name, P A L S. It's 5 Solomon Court, Jackson.
How far do you live from the property, sir?
A straight line would be three miles, perhaps?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
All right, my, my concerns or questions would be for the traffic engineer, Mr. Ray.
Yes, go ahead.
How many trucks per day are they estimating will utilize the facility?
Quite frankly, since we do our traffic studies based on peak hour traffic volumes, we don't do that. The, we look at peak hour traffic volumes and make sure the improvements can handle the peak hour traffic.
All right, so earlier, if I recall, you had stated that the majority of the traffic accessing this site would, would be coming off the interstate highway.
Yes, sir.
Right, I mean, who knows how many would be coming from Mount Holly or something? So with that, with, working on that assumption, you have the majority of the traffic coming from the interstate. And now, is it my, is it correct that the understanding is that the U-turn would be made at that traffic light just before Great Adventure's entrance?
That's correct.
Okay. So how many tractor trailers do you estimate would fit on that loop? And how many, if, if the majority, like you said, the majority of that traffic is coming from the interstate, they all have to go to that light and make the U-turn?
Right.
So, come on, folks, have you been there in the summer? This is going to be a nightmare. You're going to have tractor trailers. You're, how many loading bays are at this facility?
Let me try to answer your first question first. As far as the jug handle is concerned, we are expanding the jug handle. And it's all been analyzed to accommodate the traffic that's anticipated to use the jug handle. Let me try to give you some numbers. As far as the peak hour in the morning for the trucks, we are anticipating approximately 40 trucks in an hour. So a little bit more than one truck every two minutes. That traffic light at the jug handle is going to operate on a 110-second cycle. So if you, if you just run the numbers, you're looking at probably 35 cycles per hour. So you're looking at an average, an average of one truck per cycle on that jug handle. But occasionally, there'll be two, maybe three. But the jug handle will be sized to accommodate that activity.
Yeah.
What was the next question?
Subaru told me my car's going to get 28 miles per gallon. And that ain't happening. So my, my point is to the planning board, think about this. If anybody has ever driven out there in that area when Great Adventure's open, we like to go to the Mexican restaurant. Sometimes it's living hell to get there. We have to come from the outlet side. And then, when Great Adventure lets out at night, and like earlier, they said that the bridge over to 195 is not wide enough. Though I used to commute that way every day. Or when you go, the best time to look at accidents is go there when Great Adventure's letting out and watch the people that are in the right lane about to get onto 195 East. But oh no, that's the ramp. They want to go towards the turnpike. So now they got to come ripping across to get to the jug handle that's going to take them westbound on 195. Earlier, it was said that, that the property is well-suited for the, for the proposed activity. There's no doubt about it, that property is right there by the interstate. But to have those trucks all go westbound to make that U-turn is absolute insanity.
Respectfully disagree. We've sized the jug handle to accommodate that activity. I've gone over the numbers, the, the counties, the two counties have looked at it. They've made sure that the jug handle can handle that traffic when it's been expanded. And we've taken care of it.
Yeah, I, I understand. That's what you get paid to say. And I understand, you got to do your thing. So the planning board, think about it. You guys been out there, it's, it is a mess, absolute mess now, without tractor trailers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Who else do we have? We're going to open this up to Jackson residents now. If any Jackson residents would care to comment on this application, please raise their hand now.
She went already, Ms. Greenwood.
Greenwood spoke?
Yeah.
Okay, then, let's go to. Go ahead. And I ask that everyone adhere to the five-minute time limit. And we also not repeat any of the questions that have already been asked. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Mr. Bergman, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the questions, comments, information you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Randy Bergman, B E R G M A N N. And I live at 5.
Your address, sir?
Do you hear me? Do you hear me?
Yes.
We didn't hear your address.
Mr. Bergman?
I'm sorry, 5, sorry, 5 Brentwood Drive in Jackson.
We didn't, Brentwood?
Brent, Brentwood.
Do you know how far you are from the site?
I would say probably about a mile.
Go ahead, sir, what's your question?
Most of them are for Mr. Ray. And I was one, I was trying to get some clarification on how the trucks will be moving through the site. I, I couldn't follow the site plan very clearly. So I'd like to see how they're moving through the site. And also, I'm not clear on exactly where they'll be entering and exiting.
We're going to have to put back up Exhibit A2. No, wait a minute, A4, the overall site one. Okay. Mr. Bergman, can, can you see what's on the screen, the site plan?
Yes, I can.
Okay. The trucks will enter at the Westerly entrance from eastbound Route 537. And they will travel along the new roadway that is being constructed that parallels Route 537 into an area where there, there's a curve that we talked about earlier that we flattened. We made it a little bit less severe. So those trucks can easily negotiate that curve. And then proceed to either the big building or the smaller building, which is in an area that's segregated from the rest of the property.
So in other words, they will have to go past Pine Street to come back in here?
Run that by me, one past.
The, the trucks will have to go, if they're, if they're heading westbound.
Yes.
They will have to go past the Pine, the Pine Street intersection?
Yes.
Beyond that to enter the site?
Yeah, they, they have to go down to those reversing jug handles that are at the traffic signal west of Pine Drive. That's correct.
And how far is that from Pine Drive, about?
It's a couple of thousand feet.
All right. So then they will be going through, through the Phase 1 portion of the site, past the restaurants, past the, I guess that's the air.
The air dome.
The air dome. Past the hotel. So it'll be cutting, cutting through a good part of the whole project before they get to where they need to go.
Well, the road, the road's been designed to accommodate that activity. That, that road will serve several purposes, one of which is to take the trucks into the area where the warehouses will be.
Will there be sidewalks throughout that area?
I believe there will be in, yes.
Because presumably, there'd be a lot of foot traffic between some of those, between the restaurant, for instance, and, and the hotel, and the restaurant, and the air dome. So that sounds like it's not.
Yeah.
Safe as it could be.
And that's why these meetings are a great idea, because somebody from the board brought that issue up. And we agreed to install the pedestrian-activated lighted crosswalks or flashing beacons. We're going to look at which one is more appropriate at that four-way intersection right up front. So something good came out of this meeting tonight.
Well, I'm not sure about that. I also wanted to ask about the, having the MS Center, the MS Research Center now in Phase 1. And there have been changes also to the rest, there are fewer restaurant pads. Did I hear you say early on that that, is, is that right?
There's, there's an amended application that was recently filed, maybe within 30 days to amend Phase 1. And yes, the MS Center will be in Phase 1.
Why, why was it amended? And will that now go before, will there be another hearing required to amend the Phase 1 approval?
Yes, there'll be another hearing required.
That's before the planning board or the zoning board?
Before the zoning board.
Okay, has that been scheduled?
Not yet. I don't think so.
All right. Yeah, I would just like to, to ask whether or not the federal government has been consulted in any way or notified about this plan as it relates to the 195 interchange?
No, it, it, that's a state road. It's not a federal road. But no.
195 is a state road?
Well, it's, it's a federal interstate highway, but the NJ DOT has jurisdiction.
Has the state been notified, or is the state fully aware of that?
State's been aware of that interchange and the issues there for quite some time, Mr. Bergman. That's why, as I indicated a little bit earlier, I guess it was 10 or 15 years ago, they did make an improvement to the interchange to accommodate the Six Flags traffic that was coming off of eastbound 195. But they are aware of what's happening in the area. The two county engineering staffs have notified the DOT. So they're aware of it, yes.
Well, I know they're aware, is there anything? If there's nothing that you can do about it, and apparently you seem to have given that impression that it's not, it's not anything you can control, why are you signing off on this plan? Do you not believe that that, that interchange area and the area east of 537 is a disaster?
Who are you posing?
Virtually, virtually all the residents that have come to speak about that tonight have said, it's just, it makes no sense at all to add additional traffic in that area.
I, I, I'm not sure who the question was posed to, but.
I guess the question really is for, you know, the chairman of the planning board. Obviously, Mr. Ray isn't going to say he doesn't think it's a good idea. He's already testified that he doesn't think it's a problem. But I think everyone else seems to believe that. And I'm just wondering whether there's anyone on the planning board that believes that that, you know, that this, that's not going to be a problem.
We could, I, before the, I don't, first of all, I don't know if the planning board members can answer that question. But the law in New Jersey, the cases, Duncan Donut's case, the leading case in the area, the planning board cannot deny an application for off-site traffic conditions. The board's jurisdiction is limited only to the access to the site. In this case, reality is the access is controlled by the county because it's on a county road. So although those are legitimate concerns, they're really not a function of the planning board's jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Alferi. That's correct. Mr. Bergman, do you have any other questions?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? No? We have a motion to close public forum, please. All in favor? Okay.
I'm sorry, could I please have who motioned and seconded that?
I thought I made that clear. I thought I made that clear. Mr. Alferi, you think I was a little quick on the trigger on that? It seems that we have a couple of hands that went up after we closed the public forum.
Probably, yes.
Okay. All right. Move to reopen. First person, let's go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, and see you.
Oh, good.
Do you kindly raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the questions, information, testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
My name is Karen Argenti, A R G E N T I. And I live at 61 Clear Lake Road in Whiting, New Jersey.
How far do you live from this property?
About 20 minutes, but I'm in the same watershed. I'm in the Barnegat Bay watershed, which is the same watershed that part of this land is in.
Okay, ma'am, what's your question?
Okay, so this question is for Mr. Cardinal. And so I, I went over all of the testimony from January. And I was wondering that if he could answer the question as to, if, if you've actually decreased the building sizes, how come there's more parking spaces for trucks and more parking spaces for cars? Or anybody else who can answer it? You want me to read you the numbers that I think we, we come up with?
This is Ian Borden responding. I, I, before I answer that question, this property is in the Delaware watershed. It's not in the Barnegat Bay watershed.
Well.
And the answer to your question is?
Lot 5, Lot 5 is partially in the Barnegat Bay watershed. I, I can tell you that that's the fact. And, and that is one of my criticisms of your EIS and your stormwater plan, because you don't recognize that. And so I, when I get to ask those questions, I will discuss Barnegat Bay watershed. And if you have, if you understood where the watershed was, it would be very clear. So can you explain why the number of parking spaces and the number of trucks' parking spaces have increased? and the number of trucks' parking spaces have increased if the building sizes have been decreased?
According to my summary, we have a decrease in the amount of parking. We did increase the number of truck parking. We added some truck parking spaces, but that was just to respond to the market that we have understood, but the numbers have actually decreased.
So you have 420 parking spaces for trucks and 713 for cars? And that's what you had the last time you made a presentation before this amendment?
I can't hear.
You can't hear me?
No, we hear you. They're looking.
Okay, anyhow, you can look that up and let us know later. I guess some of my questions on the environmental impact statements. So the first thing is that the, there is two, what you call in the stormwater plan, there are two tributaries, but one of them is Barnegat Bay and the other one is the one that you mentioned. So you need to change your statement. And not only is it Barnegat Bay, but it's the headwaters of the Toms River. And so I think you should look that up. If you check with the maps that you have already said you looked at for the D.P., you will find that information out. My next question is, I understand that what you said, Mr. Borden, at the last meeting was that one of the reasons why you changed, the zoning was changed, not you, but the zoning was changed, was because you had specific objectives for the nature of the area. And one of those is that it's a key destination. So I was wondering if you could explain how a warehouse is a key destination?
I'm not sure. He has to explain that. It's a...
Okay, he doesn't have to explain it. I'll just ask the question then. That's fine with me. Takes less time. So the berm's that you're using, do you have any idea? At one part, apart by the bridge along Anderson, you said that you were going to use the existing forested area. Have you looked at the forest to see what kind of trees are there? And my other question is, will you be using native plants when you do your plantings? You don't have to answer that either. And now on to the commitment of resources that are unavoidable. So these resources, some of them are irreversible and irretrievable into environmental services. So you're getting rid of 63 acres of forest, and there's a loss of habitat, and you didn't put all of these things in your list. You're increasing the heat because you're taking down that whole forest. It's going to make the surrounding area become very hot. And in addition to whatever truck pollution could be made from the diesel, you are also, because there are less trees, you're going to have less trees to clean the air. And so how, what other alternatives have you looked at in order to come to the conclusion that there's nothing you can do about these irretrievable and irreversible environmental resources that are being lost? Did you write EIS? I guess somebody else wrote the EIS, so you probably can't answer that question. It's number 5.0.
We have the author of the EIS here.
The answer is, when examining irretrievable impacts, I think it's important to understand what the proper zoning of the site is. And this property has been zoned highway commercial for more than 40 years. So development has always been permitted at a very high impervious coverage and ratio on this property. So the fact that development is occurring, to me, detracts from the irreversible perspective because of that.
So what do you, what is your, I don't understand what you think an environmental impact statement is, then?
I'm not sure we want to, do we have enough hours in the night to debate this?
Okay, I agree. We don't have to discuss that, but I disagree with your answer. I think the reason why you do an environmental impact statement is... I don't know what that noise is. The reason you do an environmental impact statement is to see if you have an impact on the environment. And so have you looked at other alternatives to the presentation that you have now?
As I state in the impact statement under Section 6, and in turn, what you're describing is you want me to do an alternative that's a no-build. A no-build alternative, as I said, is not appropriate because this property is zoned for highway development and has been for more than 40 years. As noted in the 2009 master plan, as you state, it was noted as a destination, as an important key to the township in balancing commercial growth with the overly prevalent residential growth that had preceded the previous 20 years to 2009. So the commercial development of the Route 537 corridor was a key component of master plans in Jackson Township dating back more than 11 years.
But you said it was a destination, a key destination point, not just development?
I did not say that. That is a quote taken out of the 2009 master plan.
Okay. I agree. Okay. So let's go on to the stormwater plan. Because first of all, you know, you could have an alternative that makes a smaller footprint. Like, this is a very big footprint, especially building number one, which is, half of which is in the Barnegat Bay watershed. And if you want, we could supply, I could supply you with maps and send them to your office so that you could see exactly what we're talking about. I was wondering, like, I don't understand what the basins are going to do. It seems to me that you have that second, the first basin, which is up at the top, and then there's the bottom basin, which is discharging into a wetland. But are you also taking the water from the above basin and all the other outfalls down, as it goes down, and putting them all together in the second basin?
Yes.
And then that overflow goes into a wetland?
Yes.
And you think that that's a legal thing to do?
Yes.
You don't think it's a violation of the Clean Water Act?
No.
Are you going to treat it several times before it gets discharged to the wetland?
It has the appropriate water quality control for the stormwater management regulations.
Based on the new ones that were adopted and in effect as of March 2nd?
We are exempt from those.
And why?
Because our application preceded the effective date of those regulations.
But you're amending it now?
No, but it only applies prospectively, not retroactively. But we are complying with the then, the regulations that were in place when we made the application.
And did you submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan?
That's not required for this project. We have a stormwater maintenance plan that's part of the site plan set.
You don't have to supply that to the Soil and Water District?
We supplied soil erosion control plans to the Soil Conservation District.
Okay, and you don't have to supply a plan? Well, do you have a plan? I don't care if you supply it. Do you have a plan to take care of during construction?
Soil erosion control plan, yes, and certification is required before construction. I want to remind, if I don't mind, she's saying the overbuilding, overbuilding. My testimony of last meeting was, we have a building coverage of 30% for this project. 75% is permitted. 30%, 75% permitted.
No, I looked at those numbers, and that, you ended up doing that because you added the two phases together, and that's how you got to the 30% because you're really over the 30%, and you're very close on the 75% imperviousness because you're counting the basins as part of the things that are pervious, which is questionable because it's not real. It's a change in whatever the land was, which was trees. And so I don't know how you have two independent projects, which is what Mr. Cardinelli said in his testimony, and you have a GDP for both of them, but yet you're putting them together and you're adding them so that you have passed the test for 30%. Your building is, if it's 62 acres, 30% would be, you know, 20, and you're at 22. You have 8 and 14.
This isn't Whiting math. This is Jackson math. And we have 30% luck building coverage.
Because you're including the whole phase, it's both phases, phase 1 and 2.
It's one project. The project has a tract, and the ordinance dictates that the coverage be calculated for the tract.
Ma'am, you're going to have to move it along here with other people. You've been on for 13 minutes.
Okay, but you didn't answer the question to the lady about putting up... I mean, there is a reason for the berm to be included all the way down along the side where the basin is because there are potential, since you're putting everything into that basin, there is a potential for a big problem there. And I would suggest that you consider, reconsider that spot. Oh, I have one more further question. Would the developer, Mr. Cardinelli, be interested in offering his land as a willing seller to the Ocean County Land Trust? Because it seems to me that everybody thinks this is not a good project. It is not suited well for the site, and he could still get it developed, but it would remain as a place where people could enjoy the open forest and some trails in there would be very, very nice for the hotel that's going to be looking at all those trucks going by, one every minute and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You don't look like Catherine.
I am not Catherine.
Sir, can you sit closer to your mic? It's very difficult to hear.
Okay, we'll try to balance. So how is that?
That's better. Thank you. If you'd raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that the questions, testimony, comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Okay, John O'Callaghan, O apostrophe C, A, L-L-A, G-H-A-N. I'm at 53 Oak Lane, New Egypt, New Jersey.
And how far are you from the property?
About seven miles.
Okay, thank you.
In the EIS, it mentions noise, and it's in Section 2. It says that the range is 60 to 70 decibels and that the median sound level should be in the mid 50s and at night time in the mid 40s. I was looking at Exhibit 8.2, and there's houses there that are pretty close. Where does the numbers for 50 and 40 decibels come from? Was there a noise study that can be made available?
Those are normal noise levels driven by traffic because traffic on the roadways is the largest noise contributor in this area.
Sure, but with the bays right there and on the other side of the berm, there being a house, right? The laws say that there's a right to enjoy your property up to your property line. What I've seen with other warehouses is there's been a noise study to make sure that the noise spillage doesn't go onto the property. My question is, is the 40 to 50 based on averages? Or was there a noise study done to ensure compliance?
Without answering the question, just to give you a different spin on your question, this board has no jurisdiction or the ability to give relief from the state noise regulations, and everyone has to comply with them. So regardless of what our readings are, we have to comply with the state regulations.
Sure. So were their readings done?
Again, whether they were or weren't, we have to comply with them, so...
I'm just asking if they were done, and so if they...
No noise, specific noise studies done, no.
Okay. Is that being considered by the DEP when you're asking for your LOI?
You, no.
Okay. What is the impact to services in the area? This is a rather large development. I'm just hearing about it now. I do frequent the area. So what is the impact to, like, fire EMT, and how is that being handled?
I can only tell you that the tax money generated from this by many fire trucks and employ many fire people, this is a huge tax rate.
Okay. Have those numbers been calculated to figure out what part of revenue goes into that cost?
Again, it's not necessary because it's a permitted use, so we don't need to do a demographic study or anything else. It's a permitted use under the zone. But we know there's a significant overage between what the impact is on the fiscal level of the township versus what they're going to be bringing in in tax dollars.
So that impact has not been formally mapped out?
No, only because it's not required. So we never, we didn't hire anyone to do a specific analysis.
Okay. The impermeable surface, and this is just a comment on the last public speaker, the basins do not count for impermeable surface, just, that's just to inform you. So if you are at 30 not counting the basins, then that's fine, but the basins themselves are considered impermeable as well. My last question is the impact to affordable housing and how that is being factored in here, more than just anything that's financially required?
The, on all commercial development, under state law, the applicant has to pay a 2.5% fee based on equalized assessed value of the project as complete. So that fee has to get paid by state law to the town.
Okay. Maybe this is more of a question to the township then. With the number of jobs here, it's about one house per 16 jobs created, right? That you have to account for with affordable housing. How is the town, is that built into the township's COA plan for either round three or round four coming forward?
So, sir, I can answer that question generally. It's the other site that's generated the housing, and the affordable housing impact has been, and I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but whatever affordable housing impact there is, based on the housing element of the overall plan, it's been addressed.
Okay, what about the labor component of the additional warehouses?
No, to my knowledge, that component has not, other than it's a job generator.
Right, so like I said, the way that the rough numbers in Appendix D are, for every 16 jobs created, you're required to put in like one more affordable house. So if that hasn't been factored, you know, there's a lot of townships in the area being sued for affordable housing. And I strongly recommend that that be looked into to make sure that you, with the fourth round, that you don't get caught.
Now, we live in Plumstead, so maybe there's a different analysis. This municipality has a judgment of repose, so its requirements through 2025 have been addressed.
Yep, I just, you know, the fourth round is coming, and the lawsuits are going to start again. So just in public comments, everyone should be protecting themselves against that, making sure that it's accommodated. So I'll just leave it at that. It's yours to do with. You know, you've got the four years, but it's not something that people consider a lot, and townships are getting caught off guard a lot. So there you go. And that's all I had tonight. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. All right, I see we have one more person raising their hand.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Good job on the first shot.
Oh, boy. Okay. My name's Janet Toro, and I serve as the Board Chair of Clean Water Action.
Ma'am, we have to swear you in first?
So if you'd raise your right hand?
Oh.
Sorry. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the... It's all right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments or testimony about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please, and through the chair, I remind you of the five-minute requirement.
Okay. Janet Toro, T A U R O, seven four seven, Bay Avenue, Brick, New Jersey, and I serve as the board chair of Clean Water Action, New Jersey.
Yes, go ahead with your question.
Oh, okay, so I have a question and a comment, and I'll, you know, be succinct. Um, the ball fields, the the outdoor ball fields, there will be four outdoor ball fields, and I'm wondering about the proximity of those outdoor ball fields to the where the trucks will come in and out. And because I'm questioning, you know, I'm thinking of kids and I'm thinking of them playing on ball fields, right? I'm thinking of them running and huffing and puffing, and whether this is such a good idea or whether it's, it could be bad for their health.
There's no truck traffic.
Breathing in those exhaust fumes, you know, from the truck traffic, okay?
No, the truck traffic, though nowhere near the fields as it relates to the driveways.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to put that out there because I would assume that the exhaust fumes can be carried on the wind. Um, my other, you know, my other comment would be this. I I really support what Karen Argenti put forth, that wonderful idea of perhaps, you know, at the last hearing, I heard Mr. Cardinelli say something almost as an aside, and it was towards the end, and it really stuck with me. He said, you know, I don't even want to have one unhappy person. It stuck with me. And I think tonight it showed that there are more than one unhappy person. There's groups of unhappy people, right? So what about that? I mean, that's an idea, really, for this developer maybe to do something really great and have this land preserved, right, and get compensated for it. So, you know, I love that that idea went out there and maybe Mr. Cardinelli heard that idea, and he'll he'll sleep on it and think, you know, maybe that's not so bad. So I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and I was really glad to see that the the meeting was recorded, and I would just ask that it be posted on the township website soon so that people could access it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. All right.
I, yes. Ms. Ms. Wenzel?
Yes.
Can you please allow your video?
I was wondering why.
There you go. Can you kindly raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments or testimony about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, full name, spell your last and your address, please.
Sure. My first name is Britta, like the water filter, and my last name is long and hyphenated. It's Forsberg Wenzel. F like in Frank, O R S like in Sam, B E R G hyphen Wenzel, W E N like a Nancy, Z like in zebra, E L. And I'm gonna give you the organization's address, which is one seventeen Haynes Road in Toms River. I am the executive director for Save Barnegat Bay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I I'm fairly familiar with the planning board members, and I believe you are with me as Save Barnegat Bay, along with a number of other environmental organizations. Spent some long evenings with you with regard to the solar panel project with Six Flags Great Adventure some time ago. But for the benefit of anyone who doesn't know or isn't familiar with Save Barnegat Bay, our organization is a longstanding Ocean County organization, fifty years this year, in fact, and our mission is to protect and restore Barnegat Bay, which is the largest body of water in the state of New Jersey. And we've spent a lot of time in Jackson recently because you basically have a lot of land, a lot of trees, and you sit at the headwaters of some important water bodies, some rivers that run down to Barnegat Bay. And it's concerning to us to see this kind of development on a wooded parcel where we're gonna end up with less trees essentially. And we really haven't participated. I mean, I've been zooming into several of your meetings, but this particular project, this portion of this project actually, which is in the Barnegat Bay watershed, is just not ideal for the neighborhood, and it is preventing water from making it down to the deeper, I'm sorry, to the deeper basins of water for the Barnegat Bay. So is it correct that the person, Mr. Borden, who prepared the environmental impact statement, is stating that this land is not in the Barnegat Bay watershed?
About ninety percent of the property is in the Delaware watershed. A very small percentage of the property adjacent to the one ninety-five ramp is in the Barnegat Bay watershed, less than ten percent of the project.
And the maps you're referring to are coming from?
From our topographic studies.
From your topographic studies and not relying upon maps at the Department of Environmental Protection?
Well, are the the topographics surveys are a much higher order of precision than any aerial mapping from a published source.
Okay. And so in your environmental impact statement, I don't really see a lot of reference to protections to Barnegat Bay. Can you tell me how you consider the impact of Barnegat Bay?
Well, we consider the impact of Barnegat Bay because we're not producing any impact to Barnegat Bay. We have a single stormwater basin on the northern part of Phase One, or Phase Two, I'm sorry, that will recharge groundwater and then pipe it to the second basin to the south. So there is no water discharge. We are only infiltrating water into the Barnegat Bay watershed. We are not discharging water to the Barnegat Bay watershed.
I understand that you're not discharging, but you are impacting the Barnegat Bay watershed.
I don't believe we are. We're just doing infiltration from one of the stormwater basins. So I I think we're actually addressing your concern about recharging the aquifer in the headwater. So we are doing that, but yet we're not discharging the overflow.
And your design for the stormwater is designed to treat both quality and quantity?
Correct.
And can you talk about that for a moment? What protections, what extra protections are you putting in for Barnegat Bay watershed?
In the Barnegat Bay watershed, for that basin number one, as we call it in Phase Two, we have adequate recharge volume in that basin to fully recharge the water quality storm of the contributory area, which is a small portion of Phase Two, as well as performing groundwater recharge, which is retaining, I believe, most if not all of the two-year twenty-four-hour storm.
And I understand that, you know, at the last meeting, Mr. Cardinelli had made the point of saying that he didn't want anyone to be unhappy. And I would say to you that, you know, discharging stormwater into a wetlands, which is a protected feature of the land, and asking for permission to put a stormwater outflow into a wetland is not really the highest protection for the resource.
I would disagree because a stormwater discharge to wetland is considered in the freshwater wetland protection regulations as a permitted activity under the general permit requirements.
And so earlier in the meeting, there were some questions related to notices of violations and other issues, and it was stated that, you know, those issues are not on this particular phase because the trees haven't come down yet. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I've been following this only because I'm really interested in this particular phase, but I think that the past behavior is the best predictor of future behavior. And unfortunately, there are a number of concerns throughout the remainder of the project that has been started on Phase One from the DEP with potential illegal fill of wetlands, transition areas of wetlands, also this Ocean County Soil Conservation District in terms of the soil erosion sediment management plans. It doesn't appear to me that actually there are best practices following this project. And so while maybe you find my concern de minimis here, I am very concerned about the impacts to Barnegat Bay and our watershed, our land, our trees and our air. And I'm not sure if you know that one of the major contributing problems with Barnegat Bay is atmospheric deposition of nitrogen. It's one of the leading problems with Barnegat Bay. It's too much nitrogen coming from basically the burning of fossil fuel. So the whole project really fails in terms of its protection of Barnegat Bay. And so I guess my biggest ask, and I don't know if Mr. Cardinelli would do me the pleasure of coming to the microphone and speaking to his commitment to Barnegat Bay, and whether or not he would consider putting in an application as a willing seller to the Ocean County Natural Lands Trust, because that would permanently protect the land and would also pay him an appropriate appraised price so that he could still move forward with his other development proposals.
So for purposes of tonight's meeting, we want the board to act on this application. If your organization wants to make an offer, we'd certainly consider it.
Well, we don't actually make the offers. I'm not sure if you are familiar with the process.
Okay, we, I, okay, so the answer is for tonight, we want the application dealt with. If there's something after the meeting that could be worked out, we'll consider it, but not for tonight.
Okay, I appreciate that response, and I would like to make myself available to Mr. Cardinelli and your team to meet and potentially discuss after the outcome of this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see anybody there. Can I get a? Second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker? Mr. Justwicki?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hoodak?
Yes.
I didn't hear Hoodak call. Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I did say Mr. Hoodak. I have a bit of a delay, so that was probably on my bad.
That's okay. Okay. Moving along, twenty after eleven. Any members of the board have any further comments, questions, concerns? Anyone? Mr. Ricardi?
Mr. Cardi, can you use the mic? Thank you.
Phil Ricardi speaking. My my only question to you is, we spoke a lot about traffic and lights and trucks coming in and cars coming in and all that good stuff. I'm I'm gonna ask you if, as you develop this, if you do develop it, that safety be addressed as you said you were going to do, just as long as you're gonna do that. Because as as it develops, it becomes, and I think Mr. Ray testified to the fact that traffic will be discovered.
And I I think the trigger would be if this were approved, Mr. Gertner will include in the resolution the ability of the township to notify the county that those warrants are being met so that we're compelled to install the traffic signal, because they would install it tomorrow if the warrants were there. It's not an issue of if, it's a question of when they allow us, then we'll do it. But you you could protect yourself in the resolution, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Alpury, do you have any?
It's far too late for me to give a closing statement. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone care to make a motion?
And I just want to make sure that amongst Mr. Chairman, that among those conditions include the representation of the include the representation of the applicant to permit the the municipality to notify the county regarding warrants. In addition, the ask for this evening that the applicant has agreed to utilize pedestrian safety calming devices as as described. Thirdly, that the applicant has agreed to sixteen-foot height, either through buffer entries or trees alone.
And just to be clear, that would be the perimeter because we didn't say the entire site. That wouldn't make sense. You're just a perimeter.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, apologize. And other, and.
No, that was my fault. I didn't say it before. That's right.
And the additional stipulations and agreements made upon record at both meetings.
I I'd just like to say before the vote is taken that this is a permitted use, and it is in line with the Jackson master plan. So with that being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Justwicki?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hoodak?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for staying so late.
Move. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, everyone. Thank you.